Gentlemen, welcome to the San Carlos City Council Redevelopment Agency meeting. We are in session and would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Enter to the Capitol before we suspend your information under God and invisible liberty and justice for all.
Item two is changes to the order of agenda. Are there any changes suggested by the council or staff? Then the meeting agenda stands as stated. Next item is council communications and announcements and I'd like to take the lead on this one. We do have a very special opportunity this evening to recognize and honor one of our own who has made it big time in the big leagues. And this is a proclamation of commendation that we have prepared and we will deliver to Barry Bonds by his mother Patricia who is with us tonight. We want to thank her for coming. And I'd like to leave the commendation. However, before I do that, I'll just make a couple remarks. As I was thinking about the presentation tonight, it occurred to me that Barry and I have a few things in common. You may not quite get this, but in fact, we both played baseball. We both played sandlot baseball. I played right field, far right field. In our team, when you weren't very good, you were way out in the right field. We were out in the right field so far that not even Barry could hit it that far. Barry, on the other hand, spent his time more wisely in the ballpark and he developed a tremendous ability to play baseball and we'd like to recognize that tonight. He made this record, he was a great fielder, of course, but he made this record because he could hit. I tried to hit a few times and realized with that ball coming that fast, this is probably not my game. And so I exited left pretty quick. Barry, on the other hand, has this wonderful ability, this wonderful eye and hand coordination, which allows him to spot that ball coming 95 miles an hour or whatever, anticipating the curve or a sinker, whatever that ball's going to do, put his eyes to it, put his arms in it, his shoulders in it, put his body in it and meet it head on. And he did this over and over and over again. And as we all know, he passed the 756 homerun mark and he's now moving on. I think the latest number is 758 and I understand he plans to come back and continue playing next year, so we hope to see more and more home runs added to that record. But I would at this point like to read to you a commendation that was prepared by our city clerk Christine Bowden and some friends of hers who gathered information. Some of this information may be new to you, but I think it speaks to why we're here in presenting the honor at this time. We want to recognize Barry Lamar Bonds for the most recognized achievement in American athletics, the major league baseball homerun record. And we also want to recognize that he took his first baseball steps as a little league competitor on the San Carlos playgrounds. Many of you may not know that, but he was raised in this town and this is where he got his start. San Carlos has been known over the years, even before Barry was born, as a bit of a grassroots baseball center for baseball talent. We in fact had the Babe Ruth All-Stars as our national champions in 1961. So before Barry was even born, we did have a championship team here. We want to recognize the extraordinary athletic talent possessed by Barry. It was evident as a participant in the San Carlos Little League and as a Little League er Barry was encouraged by his late father, San Francisco outfielder Bobby Bonds. Bobby Bonds carefully nurtured his son. The story we get is that he watched Barry very carefully, probably had a few words after the game, but during the game, he was sort of absent from the process. Perhaps he was sitting on a hillside or looking from behind a tree or way up in the stands, but he was not a part of the coaching and the delivery process. But he was there for Barry and he nurtured him as Barry's career developed. We also recognize that Barry had a great deal of encouragement from his godfather, Willie Mays, and he emerged from all that as a raw but precocious first baseman and pitcher for the Kiwanis team in the aforementioned San Carlos Babe Ruth League. Now Barry showed at an early date that he was capable of hitting. At the age of 14, he was playing for the Sierra High School baseball team. Sarah High School, not the Sierra, excuse me, Sarah High School. We have a few alumni up here. At the age of 14, he once drove out of San Mateo Fitzgerald Field, drove the ball out of the field and over El Camino Real. I'm not sure where this field is, but it's got to be a long, long hit. And that was perhaps the beginning of the real long ball for Barry. He subsequently went to Arizona State University where he was named an All-American in 1885. Now the citizens of San Carlos have avidly followed Barry's progress since he ascended to the National League with the Pittsburgh Pirates in 1986. And we've also enjoyed a special affinity for this hometown star since he joined the San Francisco Giants in 1993. I note that today, we're also celebrating the 50th anniversary of the Giants coming to San Francisco. So there's a dual reason for joy, but fortunately, the Giants came here, Barry went with the Giants and we can enjoy both the Giants and the participants, especially on Barry. And we also want to recognize that his record includes seven Most Valuable Player awards, 14 All-Star selections, countless assistical achievements, and most particularly, his feat on August 7, 2007, establishing a new major league homerun record. And so therefore, I resolve that I, Tom Davis, Mayor, and the City Council of San Carlos hereby congratulate and commend Barry Lamar Bonds on the occasion of this historic accomplishment dated this 13th day of August 2007. And the council would like to go down and present the proclamation to Mrs. Bonds, his mother. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We know moms do a lot of work too.
Congratulations, Mr. Bonds.
Mr. Bonds, here's the proclamation that we have. We've also taken the liberty of signing the baseball. We recognize that it usually goes the other way, but this one's going to go that way. And these are council members and our city clerk Christine has signed this for you.
Thank you very much.
And Christine has another gift for you.
Thank you, Christine. All right. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate the time. Thanks again for coming and being a part of our presentation. We'll now continue with our council reports. And let me start with Inga. Do you have something for us, Inga?
I guess the only thing I'll mention is that I have decided to not seek reelection come November and that just there's too many conflicts between my professional career and my family life, so I've decided to take a couple of years off. Hopefully, we'll be back in a couple of years, but I just wanted to let folks know that the reasons for me not seeking reelection actually had to do more with trying to get a little bit more balance in my life, so.
Well, that's a tough announcement, but thank you for sharing it with us.
Ma'am?
Don't have anything quite so dramatic to report on. But speaking of drama, and I know I've talked about this a fair amount lately, but I did attend the San Carlos Children's Theater, Stone on the Road and Robin Hood presentation and wow, was that entertaining. Brad, you've got competition out there. You're sitting there watching this play and here's this kid, I don't know how old he was, probably about 12, playing Robin Hood and you find yourself forgetting that this kid is 12 years old and he's doing such a fantastic job playing the leading role. Super presentation. I'd really encourage San Carlos citizens to get out and see the next show whenever that comes up. Watch for it, they always do posters and so forth, but it was very, very entertaining. It was a good show. The other thing that I wanted to mention is an item that I would like to see put on our council agenda for the future, Mr. Mayor, and that is that we might look at our RGS/LGS Association and whether we want to remain in that JPA. And that's it.
Thank you. Bob?
The only thing I have tonight is I attended a meeting the other evening of the City and County Association of Governments, made up of representative, well, made up actually of each city in the peninsula, in San Mateo County, as well as the county of San Mateo. Twenty cities and the county. And I've been on this organization delegated by our council here for the last two years. And each time I go to a meeting, I'm just amazed at the way that we can work together. We don't always agree, all 21 of us, on different items, but the way we can talk about things, the way we can work things out. We had a representative from the Metropolitan Transportation Commission come, the chairperson of the board, and he's a supervisor in Napa County. And he said of all the counties in the Bay Area, he said San Mateo County has it together. They can work it out. They're on the forefront and the cutting edge in a lot of items. And I think that's a credit to San Carlos as well as to the other cities and the county. We're ahead in the transportation curve and we're also ahead on the housing curve. And he just wanted to verify that and I just wanted to make a statement to my fellow council members and to the public, both here and watching, that we live in a great place and we're trying to make it work. And of course, we could always use more help, but we're always working together and trying to get the right thing for the people of not only each city, but of the whole county. Thank you.
Brad. I'd like to just add a couple of items. Tonight, we interviewed four very strong candidates for our EDAC, our Economic Development Advisory Commission. And we have selected Robert Parkes to join the commission at their next meeting. So Robert Parkes is appointed to the EDAC committee. Also, I'd like to recognize and thank all those that were involved in the mayor's family fund bike ride last Sunday. It was again a very nice ride. Everyone got home safely. We had a couple of little kids on training wheels. They didn't quite go the whole route, but they gave it a good try and we'll see them back next year on two wheels instead of four. We raised money for Past Christian and that money will be put to good use as we go forward with our project assisting the local community in their rebuild program. And I think that's all I have. So we'll move right along to the next item on the agenda, which is a report on the purchase of a new fire engine. We have that as item 4A and the chief would like to comment on that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Just as a reminder on this, as a part of the new JPA agreement, any large expenditures need to come back to the city councils for information that we're going to be moving forward in that process. So at the last fire board meeting back in July, the Fire Commission approved authorization to go ahead and go out to bid for September for replacement of a new fire engine. Again, there's no impact to this year's budget. We don't expect to take delivery until next year of this vehicle, in which case, we have the funds that we've already started set aside in the vehicle replacement program to handle that component.
You understand this is replacing a 20-year-old plus?
This is replacing a 1984 unit that should have been replaced about six years ago.
Okay. You think I should add something?
Just additionally, if I can just give you a quick little update on what's happening in the department, we did close the fiscal year on target and we actually were able to turn back $105,000 to each parent organization based on loans that were provided that we ended up not needing to get us through the fiscal year. So we're happy to return those funds back to each of the parent agencies. I also wanted to advise you that we've also applied for a grant for another fire engine. We have been so successful in the grant process that we are through the first hurdle with FEMA for a replacement for another fire engine. So if we are to receive this additional grant, we would have a 20% matching cost for a new fire engine, which would be about $45,000 to each parent agency. So just more to come on that, but we're working through that. We are still in the process. Due to it being an election year, they've started already with the process of divvying out those funds through FEMA and they're already up to around five. And so we anticipate if we're still in there, that we have a pretty good shot of gaining that piece. As a reminder too, we did get a $175,000 grant for a replacement breathing apparatus earlier this calendar year. We're expecting delivery of those items in the end of this month and we'll go ahead and process. And again, that was through FEMA, a grant that has been very successful for us. And finally, I'm hoping that September the 4th, we'll be back up to full staffing within the department. I've just given conditional job offers to four persons and we're working through that process at this time. And the Fire Academy starts September the 4th with the conclusion date of December the 14th and they should be coming online after that. But it'll be the first time in many, many years that the Fire Department's been back up to the full staffing level that we've needed to start with that. We separated from Fire Hire. We did our own testing process this year. We had 248 people pick up applications, 153 applied of that, 136 showed up for the written test. And then the interview panel interviewed 32 and gave me a list of 10 to look at. So we're moving forward in that process. Any questions that you have? I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for the chief? Thank you very much. Keep that grant money coming. Take all we can get. Next presentation is item 4B. It's on resource sharing by Chief Roethaus. Roethus, excuse me.
Good evening, Mayor Davis, members of the city council. As you know, at the last strategic planning workshop that we held in February, the city council set out some goals and objectives for the departments to take a look at for the following six months. One of the goals was for the police chief, myself, to report on resource sharing options that could be entertained should the council choose to move forward on those. The staff report contains four options for possible further discussion should the council wish to consider that in the future. And obviously, this is an information-only report at this time.
Any questions for the chief?
I just had one quick question. I think that some of these are really good ideas and I'm interested in kind of understanding the timing or the process for implementing some of them.
I think what it would, if the council was interested in taking a look at any of these options in a serious vein, I would suppose the next best venue for that might be to provide some direction to staff at the next strategic planning workshop, which is going to be taking place in a couple of weeks. So if you wanted to revisit any of those, that might be a good time.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
So Greg, the next step would be a re-review of this at the planning session?
There's been no formal discussions really on any of these. There's just kind of a peripheral discussions. But if the council was interested in any of these options seriously, they could go ahead and provide some direction to explore those. Obviously, the exploration on some of these options would bring forth both pros and cons about things that could work with them and things that might be hindrances to their success. And any report that I bring forward would bring forth both the pros and cons of such any kind of a business merger like those.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
I just have a question for the city attorney because we did get some, I think all of us received an email that was related to this topic, so there's I guess some awareness out there. Would it be prudent for us then if we are going to discuss this at the strategic, whatever we call it, the council retreat, might we want to list this as an item on our agenda specifically so if anyone wants to come and speak on the topic and be aware that we're going to speak on the topic? I know we don't normally do that with the retreats. They're kind of open-ended, but.
It is and unless it was actually part of the strategic planning and brought up in that vein, then it probably wouldn't be appropriate for that meeting, but we could, if the council wanted to agendize it at a future meeting, it could.
So what do we do is discussion at that point, we'll bring it back here for more formal hearing and approval at a later date. Yes. Brad?
And I guess my other, my next follow-up thought would be if the chief, now that you've done some analysis of this, if you feel like there's an area of these that would be good to pursue, then you know, I know that for me, I'd be interested in that, to see what you think would be worth pursuing. Your recommendations ultimately.
Actually, just to the chair, I mean, it seems to me that obviously, you're just as interested in we are in terms of saving costs as well as making sure that we have, you know, even better coverage from a public safety standpoint. So if you're actively sort of pursuing some of these that you think are good ideas and want to come back with a recommendation or once it's moved a little bit farther, my question about timing is really more about, you know, now that we've got this piece of paper that has, you know, four actually pretty good ideas on it, what happens next? And I'd just be interested in knowing sort of next steps and what timing-wise you think, if any of them are worth pursuing or if some of them are just based on sort of loose discussions that you're having with other jurisdictions.
Right. I mean, I think the best answer I can give to that is that each of these suggestions are very preliminary and they're brainstorming only. So there's so much more that would have to be ferreted out for me to be able to make any kind of a recommendation, whether they would work or not work. It would create staff time, obviously, and I'd be, you know, happy to do, pull over staff time on anything that anybody was interested in exploring. I think in terms of the action to bring that forward and how that works, I maybe have to defer to the city manager and city attorney. It sounds like the city manager is saying maybe it needs to be brought forth in a future council action or some sort of a direction from council to pursue something.
Yeah, I don't know that. I mean, I wouldn't necessarily take this and agendize it just for the strategic planning because I think we ought to leave the strategic planning meeting just that. And I would defer this actually back to staff to kind of pursue those that seem reasonable to pursue and let the other ones die for lack of participation or feasibility or reasonableness.
So why don't we, why don't we have discussion at the planning session as we normally do? And following that, then we could bring back or ask that you bring back a more complete report on those items that are of particular interest to the council? All right. Any other questions? All right? You're all right? You're doing well? Next, our number 5A, our presentations. At this point, we'd like to present gift certificates to San Carlos residents by the South Bayside Waste Management Authority for its battery recycling survey. And Brian has a report for us.
All right. Let me introduce this and then I'll turn it over to Mr. McCarthy. As council undoubtedly knows, earlier this year, the South Bayside Waste Management Authority, of which San Carlos is one of 12 member agencies, began a pilot project in the city of San Carlos to test out the concept of battery and cellphone recycling. The idea was to test this with San Carlos residents and if the program was successful to expand it throughout the 12 agency region. The program involves encouraging residents to take cell phones and household batteries that would be recycled, put them in a Ziploc bag and to put them on top of their recycling stack. The program was very successful. Over 1,600 pounds of recycling occurred in San Carlos and as a result, the program, I'm pleased to say, is now expanding to all 12 agencies. Staff worked closely with both Cliff Feldman and Kevin McCarthy at SBWMA and we put a little economic development spin on this project and that's probably very appropriate because as some of you may know, our brand new redevelopment housing manager, Mark Sawicki, started today. In fact, Mark is in the audience this evening. Thanks for coming, Mark, and glad to welcome him to the staff. What we did is we came up with three businesses in San Carlos, Trader Joe's, Azure Restaurant and Anita's, and we came up with the idea of giving a gift certificate to each to encourage people to fill out the survey on the program and to give the SBWMA insight into how to operate the program at its highest efficiency. And we were pleased to see that over 750 San Carlos residents responded to the call. So tonight, I'm going to turn the podium over now to Kevin McCarthy, the executive director at SBWMA, and he will share with us the three winners of the gift certificates in San Carlos. Kevin?
Thank you, Brian. It's nice for me to come up here and give out these things. It's not something I normally get a chance to do. As Brian said, the pilot has been a great success, so thanks to your leadership and the citizens of San Carlos, you're now leading the county with this effort and everyone else will get this service. So let me get right to the winners. I'll just start from first prize and work my way down to third prize. The first prize goes to Helen and Fred Gerhauser. This is a $100 gift certificate to Azure Restaurant.
Congratulations to Helen and Fred. I can see there's a good meal coming on with plenty of courses.
They have a lot of new friends now.
Oh, terrific.
Second prize goes to Gary Head and this is a $50 gift certificate for Trader Joe's. And the third prize, I don't think this person is here tonight, Susan Gilmore. Okay. This is a $50 gift certificate to Anita's Sweets and Treats, so we'll make sure. The invisible link doesn't say your name, so. But thank you very much.
Well, congratulations to Fred and Helen and Susan and Mark. I'd also like to just confirm and welcome again Mark Sawicki, who's just joined us as Housing and Economic Redevelopment. Welcome, Mark. Be good to have you here and we look forward to working with you. Okay, the next item is public comment. I do have one speaker slip from Sarah Kelsey. Please note that the public comment is limited to two minutes to items not on the posted agenda.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak briefly to the council. I wanted to call your attention to a concern or question I had about second dwelling unit policy as it exists in San Carlos. And it came to my attention because of a proposed second dwelling unit in my neighborhood, but I'm not here to speak to you about that because I know you can't act on things that I bring to you and besides which, it's not time-relevant to what you're doing. I do want to bring to your attention that the policy and the state law, as I came to understand it through this process and as are being applied in San Carlos through the Planning Commission, basically means that any homeowner in San Carlos has the right to add a second dwelling unit to their residence unless it can be proved in writing in advance that either a health or safety hazard exists or that a parking overload would exist, which when you actually think about how to prove either of those in writing in advance of something that doesn't yet exist, is pretty difficult to do. The city does have an existing ordinance which says that no more than one residence for every 400 square feet can have a second dwelling unit, but apparently, that's essentially null because it's trumped by state law, which says that you can't prohibit anyone from adding a second dwelling unit to their residence unless one of these things can be proven. Now, if you think about any neighborhood in San Carlos, trying to prove that there's no possible space to park, you know, one or two more cars on the street, it's almost impossible. And a health and safety hazard to adding one additional residence anywhere, again, almost impossible to prove. So I don't know if the city council is already aware of this as an issue. The statutes that San Carlos has on the books implies that we are not because it tends to say that you have to get an exception to have a second dwelling unit, but in fact, an exception means only that they, that you have to be able to give people an opportunity to prove in writing that one of these conditions might exist because state law leans towards everyone being able to have a second dwelling unit on their residence. If you have questions on further, I'm happy to write you a letter or this is through discussions I had in planning with Michael Fasadi, the planner.
Why don't you do this, sir? Why don't you give your contact information to the city manager and we'll get back to you and review the situation, the ordinance situation with you.
Yeah.
And then as necessary, we can bring it back here for further discussion.
Anyway, it's not relevant to our situation anymore, but I thought, gosh, I'm not sure the citizens of San Carlos realize that this is in fact likely possible.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just as a comment before a person leaves, you know, state law was amended to make it a bit easier for second dwelling units to go in because a lot of cities had prohibited them, required use permits, and it was part of the effort, I think, at the statewide level to have more housing opportunities and what are considered probably lower cost, not low-cost housing, but lower cost housing available. However, San Carlos amended However, San Carlos amended its code three or four, three or four years ago, to be consistent with state law, and it still does require approval through the planning department, and sometimes the planning commission, depending on the circumstances. And I know personally that we have turned down some second units because of traffic situations, narrow streets, and we've had some pretty strong meetings with neighbors coming out opposing second units in those cases, like when the fire truck can't get through a street because of too much parking. So, I'll be glad to talk to the person, also to you also, and share with you, you know, some of the background and the ordinance that we did adopt.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Cheryl?
Hi, I'm Cheryl Pomerank from the Chamber of Commerce, and I would just like to remind the council and all residents who might be listening, that this Friday and Saturday, the chamber will be hosting an electronics recycling event at the northeast corner of Holly and El Camino. You enter on El Camino. There will be people there to take the stuff out of your car, so all you have to do is get it into the car in the first place. I understand it's a very fast, efficient process, takes a minute or two of your time, and yet, you can get rid of all the keyboards, the telephones, the televisions, all of that stuff that are sitting around and need to be properly recycled for our environment. So, it's Friday and Saturday, 9:00 to 3:00, at the northeast corner of Holly and El Camino.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a habit of dropping digital cameras in the lake. I presume you'll take those, too?
No, I can't.
No, no. Okay. Any other public speakers, public comment? All right, we'll move along to the consent calendar. These items are considered to be routine, will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for a separate action. Council members like to remove any item?
Yes, item 7G.
Item 7G, okay. Any others? Anything from staff? Anything from the public? All right, do you have a motion for items A through F?
I make a motion to approve items 7A through F.
Second.
Gocott, please.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Teagle Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Mayor Davids?
Yes. And we'll pick up item 7G at the close of our meeting. Item 8A has, is be continued to an uncertain date, at the request of the city attorney and the chief of police. And we'll move now up to item 8B.
Do we need, actually, a motion, since it was a public hearing, to, no? Okay.
But we'll renotice.
I'm sorry? We don't?
We'll renotice the, yeah.
We'll renotice, all right. We have the introduction of an ordinance establishing sewer connection capacity fees for all new developments and redevelopments.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in the late 1980s, South Bayside System Authority, who's the governing body of the wastewater treatment plant, realizing that all member agencies in the future are going to need additional capacity, they came up with a program called the Stage 2 Capacity Expansion, and at that time, set the price of every gallon of the capacity at $1.55 per gallon. And based on that, staff recommended city council and ordinance, and set the capacity slash connection fee for single-family residential, every residential unit, this is all new residential, at $1,600 per unit, and $1,600 for every 270 gallons of industrial and commercial usage. Later on, that fee was increased to, based on their cost estimate, to $2.65. However, city did not increase the fees. However, that fee was not adjusted since 1997, until in last six to nine months, the SBSA staff and their consultants reviewed the cost of this expansion, and based on the cost of the expansion, they realized that the cost of every gallon from this point on should be $12.40, rather than $2.65. So, in order for the city to be able to pay and purchase the additional capacity, you recommend that the fee from $1,600 per unit go to $4,500 per unit. And out of that $4,500, the majority of it, as you can see in the staff report, will go to the South Bayside System Authority to purchase capacity, approximately $1,100 of it will go towards the city's capital improvement program. The other cities are considering doing the same. Actually, City of Redwood City asked for the staff report and the ordinance last week, which we forwarded to them. And the survey was done by San Francisco Bay Area Water Quality Control Board, as far as the capacity fees are concerned, and they came up with the average of fees in all of San Mateo County agencies in 2006, 2007, was $4,483 per residential unit. Based on that, I'll try to answer any question you may have.
Any questions for Parvise?
I just had one question. It seems to me that the ordinance was fairly vague, and the definition of what triggers this new fee for sewage connection capacity, is it indeed that vague, or is there some process by which folks in the building department know, and there's certain criteria for establishing this fee? On, specifically thinking of redevelopment, rather than development, because we're pretty much reduced in the amount of development that can occur?
Correct. Actually, city engineer is responsible for calculating the fees, and of course, residential is simple. Every new residential, for example, if one single-family home is torn down, and six condominiums are being built, developer is charged for five units, because they're given credit for one unit existing, so they pay for five units. That's residential, is simple. In commercial, it's a little more difficult. We estimate the water consumption of the new development. For example, if you see a bank building is being converted to a restaurant, so we take the square footage of the proposed restaurant, and find another restaurant, and find the square footage, we have the water consumption for the year for that restaurant, we calculate accordingly what the fee should be for this new restaurant. In all new developments, that's how we calculate. For example, last time, the latest was PetSmart in San Carlos Marketplace. We asked a developer for water consumption from other facilities that they own, and they send the water consumption, and we calculated the fees based on that, and they paid fees accordingly. So, that's how we calculate fees.
Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification.
Any others?
I have a question as well. Thing that I'm struggling with is, I'll just turn to page 2, towards the end of the report. It says, "Considering the cost of the city's CIP," which is capital improvement program, I assume, "it is recommended that the fee go from $1,152 to this $4,500." But the thing I'm struggling with, Parvise, is there's nothing in the report that explains to the council the city's CIP program. It says considering it, but there's nothing here to consider. So, I don't know how we're going from, you know, I can see here that what we're doing is we're taking in a one-time fee for, from a developer, and part of that money, it seems like, from the report here, that the SBMA has calculated what typical usages for that kind of unit, a housing unit, commercial unit, whatever, and so, we come up with this $12.40 per gallon, one-time fee. So, I can see that, but I can also see that there's a difference between what they're asking for, and what we're asking for, and we're asking for money, I assume, for our capital improvement program, in order to put in new lines down the road, and that sort of thing. I assume this is being earmarked, not just for capital improvement in general, but capital improvement à la our sewer lines.
Exactly, for sewer line.
But there's no, what's not in our report is any kind of explanation of what's the plan, how many sewer lines we're going to do in the future, what kind of money do we need? There's just no background here, so can you, if you can fill us in on that, how did we come up with the $1,152 being added to the fee, so that we have a total of $4,500? I can, and before you answer, I can see what you did in terms of an average, okay, but that still doesn't explain what's our plan, though.
The plan, actually, if you look at the budget that was adopted by city council capital improvement program, if I remember correctly, following this year, $700,000 is programmed for sewer capital improvement program. If we don't add this, and make the new developers pay for any portion of it, all of that will be paid from the residents, existing residents, the businesses on annual sewer charges that we charge. That $700,000 will be added to operation maintenance cost of the treatment plant and the collection system, and that's how we calculate the annual fees. Like, for example, this year, we raised the fees by 22 percent. Cost of capital improvement program was included in that. Here, we're just recommending a new developer, this collection system that is there has a value, and it costs so much per year for the years to come, to improve it. So, any new developer benefiting from this system has to pay a fair share cost of that. There is a lot, if we want to get into a lot of details of it, it can be done, but it's very time-consuming, it's very long. Basically, the way it works, we did that in early 1985, '86, to set a value to the existing collection system, and calculate the value of that collection system, total value, divided by number of parcels in the city, and then you can see the value of the collection system for every parcel, or every building. Now, a new developer comes in, he or she will have to pay that much to be able to access this system. However, since a lot of this is redevelopment, the existing businesses or the buildings, owners have paid over the years for most of that cost. So, it is logical to at least have them pay a portion of what the city is going to spend on capital improvement program to improve the system.
If I can press on this a little bit more, so, $700,000 is what's in our budget for '07, '08?
For next three years, at least.
And by charging so much, this $1,152, we're trying to recapture part of that, not all of it, but part of it?
Correct.
Do you have, then, some kind of forecast of, based on units you see coming in, units that have happened in the past, an average? And partly, what I'm concerned about here is, I'm aware of the fact that when we charge fees, we can be challenged on it. We could be challenged by developer, I believe, and maybe the city attorney wants to jump in here, but I just want to make sure that we don't...
This is a public hearing for that purpose, so...
Okay.
And this is set down as a developer fee, and we published the notice in the newspaper, and did everything we're supposed to do for developer fees.
Okay.
And I, but we were just kibitzing back here, if I might.
Yes, please.
I mean, every city we've ever been associated with has a capacity fee, and that's what this is. And we've had a capacity fee, we're raising it. SBSA raised the capacity fee to us, and we're just following, passing it through. So, I'm not sure why it's an issue.
It's an issue, because I just want to make sure that, you know, sure, I could sit up here, Mr. City Attorney, and say it's not my money, and just, easy enough, but I don't feel that way. And I don't know if we should feel that way as a council. I just want to make sure that we're being fair, that we're looking at how much our costs are for the future, how much are we trying to recapture, and are we doing the right thing? That's all. So, that's why I'm asking the question.
I can't explain that, but I, the report does tell us that we're currently collecting $1,181 off our current rate.
Sure.
And the new rate, we'll be collecting $1,152. So, way back when, we've established that rough amount as being an appropriate amount to move into the capital improvement plan, and we're maintaining that amount. So, nothing's really changing in terms of the philosophy, or the theory behind capturing those dollars. The totals change just a little bit, but we're basically rounding out to $4,500, and that becomes an easy number to work with.
Correct. That $1,600 that was set back in 1985, '86, as the mayor mentioned, almost $1,100 for capital improvement, and it's been used that way. It goes in the capital improvement reserve, and it's used that way. We have spent over $16 million or more on the capital improvement program. So, here, really, we're not raising that cost. That cost was $1,100. Here, to just come up with a round number, said, okay, make it $1,152. But it's not a whole lot different than what it was, has been for last over 20 years.
Let me restate a concern, with all due respect, Mr. Mayor. I can see that we're not raising it that much. Again, my, the thing I'm trying to drive at is to be fair, both to the developer and to people who live here already and are plugged into the system. They shouldn't, because somebody else comes along and develops their property with 52 units, and creates this need in infrastructure, it's also not fair to expect current residents to have to pick up the tab for that. So, we've got to look at both sides. And I'm simply saying, what I don't see in this report is any background material on what it is we're looking at, the, I thank you for giving us the figure, or reminding us of the figure of $700,000, but even as the agency itself, the SBMA discovered, you know, they're jumping from 265 to 1240. I've heard Mr. Grisilli say before, "Let's not do that," as far as, as a council. I realize this is a different board that did this. "Let's not make huge jumps like that. Let's keep after it and make incremental jumps, instead of having to hit people with something that's pretty strong." And so, Mr. Mayor, when I look at what our infrastructure needs are for the future, I just want to be sure that we're doing the right thing. Maybe we should, instead of going from a, you know, maybe the figure should be $2,000 that we should be adding, to make sure that we're covering our infrastructure needs for the future.
Let me just comment briefly on the SBSA process. The old amount was a whole lot less than the new amount, $2.65 versus $12.40. The $12.40 goes to recover over time the cost of construction of Phase 2. And we're going to get from Phase 2 690,000 gallon capacity, or Stage 2, I should say. So, we get $690,000 capacity, it costs us a whole lot more per gallon than the first phase, which was done 25 years ago. And so, we're looking at, from the SBSA standpoint, we're looking at the necessity to recapture the cost of Stage 2. The city, on the other hand, has to pass that through. We don't want to absorb it. And so, the city is charging that additional amount appropriately. So, the knee-jerk, if there is a knee-jerk, is on SBSA. But the problem is that until we develop the numbers, and until we develop the budget to build Stage 2, and really start to spend the money, we didn't, we didn't need the money. So, you know, do we, does SBSA take the $2 and kind of move gradually forward, knowing that sooner or later, they're going to spend it? Or do they wait till they need it, the rate holders demand it, and then we spend it? We chose to spend it and to charge for it as it was needed, and therefore, you see the big jump. So, I think that, I think that that's the problem we have as a city, is passing that through. The other issue, I think, is an interesting one, and that's what determines the $1,100 extra.
Right.
And I think that's probably a subject for a different meeting, but what should it be? You know, maybe it ought to be $2,500, maybe it ought to be $1,200, I don't know. And perhaps that's something that can be brought up at another time. Parvise, you want to comment?
It's a little more complicated than that. The reason, one way to do it is, we did back then, for example, I'd say, you'd set a value for this collection system. I can tell you approximately, this collection system is worth about $110 million. You divide $110 million for 11,000 parcels, so the cost of every parcel is approximately $10,000. Now, do we want to charge every new developer $10,000? Reason is no, because these are not vacant lots. Most of them are being redeveloped. There is a single-family home being turned over into five condominiums, or a bank is being turned into a restaurant. So, over the years, they have paid what we have invested in this system. But to be fair, and make sure that all the... But to be fair and make sure that all the existing residents and business of San Carlos don't pay 100 percent of the future capital improvement program, any new developer should pay a fair share. Now, that fair share, really, I don't think you can bring 10 engineers, you're going to come up with 10 different numbers, unless you set it based on the value of existing collection system, and as I say, divide it per parcel, and say, the value is $10,000 per parcel, everybody pays $10,000.
So I don't think we have enough information to carry on the discussion in terms of the validity of 1,100.
That's true.
But I think we need to move on this issue and bring that back for a future discussion, recognizing again that we're not increasing the amount we're taking, we're simply taking the same amount against a higher cost for the second, for the Stage Two.
And we're actually cutting ourselves short a little bit, $30, $30, you know, should we be.
Yeah, another way it's doing it, you may adopt an ordinance to collect the cost of the capacity that we pay SBSA and not charge developers for CIP, or do that at a later date, maybe two, three months from now. The reason I'm suggesting that, because tomorrow, the developer comes in and pays 1,600, we cannot buy the capacity we need.
I would, I would agree with the mayor that we move on this now, but we might have to revisit the CIP program in the future, because I'm not sure we're, in fact, I know for sure that since we're taking $30 less, we're cutting ourselves short. Why are we doing that?
$300 more.
So, I mean, it's not a lot, but let's look at it in the future. Thank you.
Any other council questions?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I got to chime in on this.
Oh, yeah.
I apologize. We're actually going up, according to this report, it's going up from 700, no, pardon me, 884.50. Correct, Parvies? That's what we were doing the last few years. That's what the second paragraph says.
I'm sorry, say it back.
From 884 to 1182. Second paragraph on the back.
Correct, what we've sent to SBSA.
Right.
Yes.
No, not what we sent to SBSA. It says here, reduce the amount going to CIP from 1181 to 884.
Correct.
So in effect, today, we're going from 884 to 1181. I just want to make sure, right?
To 1152.
1152, I apologize, okay?
Right.
Okay, first. Secondly, every cost, just to let everybody know, every dollar the developer pays or has to pay in a fee gets passed on. So realize that the developer may pay this, and I'm not saying we shouldn't vote for it, I'm going to vote for it tonight, but it gets passed on to the buyer of that unit. So just real, it does.
But it's not all over units, for example, commercial, that restaurant.
Right, not on the commercial side, but on the residential side.
Residential.
It does.
All right.
I know, it does.
Sure.
Believe me. Secondly, the other thing, and as Councilman Brokaw said, if we send representatives to these different groups, and again, no disrespect to the mayor, if he was on that committee, I really think we should emphasize that, I think, pay as you go is better, setting up smaller increments each year, building up reserves is a whole lot better than going from 265 to 1,240.
Cost is better.
I know, I know, I heard you, how you explained it, you didn't know the cost, you didn't know what it was going to be, I understand all that. I'm just telling you, it's my philosophy, not, I'm not saying...
I understand, but pay as you go is today. They're in design process, and they have to pay.
I'm voting for this, I'm voting for this. All I'm saying is, to go from 265 to 1,240 is against my philosophy, okay? I think it should have been raised over the last 10 years, marginally each time, and this would have been a 5 or 10 percent raise, the same thing I said before. That's all, that, I'm, thank you, I'm sorry.
Anyone else?
No, I just want to ask a question to that point, because I agree with all those points. You know, we're jumping from 265 to 1,240, which is an enormous rate jump. What's to ensure that this isn't going to jump from 1,240 to 25, 10 years from now? In other words, are the reserves built into this number? I realize this is going to pay off the expansion project. So, you know, what's the, what's the ongoing insurance that we're not going to be in the same position 10 years from now?
There really isn't any, to be honest with you. The treatment plant is in dire need of extensive repair, and there are not sufficient reserves to even come close.
So will this take care of that?
No.
No.
This will cover the Stage Two, the addition. We're going to come back to you and request a rather sizable increase over time, and it may well be reflected in a bonding situation, because we're probably looking at somewhere in the range of $300 million to rebuild the plant for the next 25 years. Bearing in mind, it's been out there 25 years, and it's been maintained, maintained well, but we're not to the point where systems are just tired and wearing out and have to be dealt with. So that's coming back to us, and that will involve another rate increase, probably to support a bond structure to make, to pay for the improvement.
Well, we'll look forward to a more organized approach for the future.
Yes, well, we've, we, I say, collective we at the SBSA have resolved that reserves are very important, and 25 years from now, we shouldn't find ourselves in this position, but...
He is here.
We're going to be there. Okay, moving along, this is a public hearing. Would anyone left from the public like to comment on this issue? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Home favor?
Aye.
Aye. And was there a motion on the ordinance?
Oh, move introduction of ordinance number... 1391, an ordinance of the city of San Carlos, amending the municipal code, chapter 13.04, modification of sewer connection fees.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Teague, authority?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Brokaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Davids?
Yes. Okay, the next item is item 9A, it's consideration of safety measure options for the intersection of San Carlos Avenue and Chestnut Street.
So mayor, members of the council, the options that were presented to you at one of your meetings, now we have added a couple of more options to it, and giving you the funding options and how the projects can be proceed, and now we recommend the city councils select one of the options and authorize the staff to proceed, following allocation of any required funding.
I have a question.
No, a question.
In the report, it says that for option, whatever it is that includes this...
Yes.
...attachment, is, I think, 14,000 per, it says 14,000 per intersection. Is that one time across the intersection this way? For instance, let me put it this way, let's say we wanted to do this at Laurel Street, we want, and at Laurel, you can cross the north side or the south side of the intersection, right, to get across San Carlos Avenue. So what you're saying is to do this once across that intersection is 14,000?
One crossing, exactly.
So there's a maintenance factor along with that, as time goes on. A maintenance factor.
Maintenance factors, from the survey we have done, some cities have installed, they last anywhere from eight to 10 years without losing the color, which really is good. Eight to 10 years, it's not bad.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, now I'm confused. So in the report, it says it's $14,000 per intersection, so it's four ways.
This is correct. Because we were considering the intersections that have only one crossing, I should have said per crossing, $14,000 per crossing.
Per crossing, thank you.
Any other questions for Parvies?
And I'm sorry, just to, because I don't remember it in reading through it, the cost to take the crosswalk out and to put barriers on the corners, is there a cost?
It's minor.
Under $1,000?
$1,000.
Thank you.
So have a series of options. Option C and E, as I read the report, are not recommended by the city attorney. Option F obviously is the most expensive, that's a fully actuated traffic signal, and the others are pretty self-explanatory. As we're pondering these issues, we do have a request for public speaker, Fred Fastenham. Would you like to tell us a bit about this, Fred?
Hi, I'm Fred Fastenham, I live at 525 Vista, and these options that are going, some of them are rather expensive, embedding the lights or putting in a new traffic light. It seems to me the most expeditious way would be to take the amber lens out of the lights that are there and put a red light in. Right now, somebody running across the street activates the amber light, which tells a motorist to slow down and use caution, but if they put a red light in there, a person running across the street would activate the red light, it tells the motorist to stop and go when it's safe, and it would seem to me that that's the most expeditious way and the most economical way to improve that intersection. We already have a flashing red light on Holly Street, and this would be a similar situation, except this one is only activated when somebody wants to cross. Thank you.
Thank you. And Brian Mandel?
Mr. Mayor, city council members, Brian Mandel, San Carlos, I have two easy improvements to make regarding that intersection. I don't have to be explaining, I have a picture here taken yesterday, and I would like to give each of you a copy. The photograph is self-explanatory.
All right, thank you. Would anyone else like to comment on this issue? I say, would anyone else like to comment? Take a look at Brian's picture. So your issue, Brian, is that depending on what's parked where, there's an opportunity to obscure the light altogether, in which case it wouldn't be seen no matter what color it was.
Could you repeat that, please?
I say, your point is that depending on what is parked along the curb, the light is quite possibly obscured and not visible.
It's obscured by the tree.
Right.
Yeah, the light is obscured by the tree, the tree needs trimming.
And also by the RV that's parked there.
Vehicle, any vehicle parked in that last...
You want to come up?
The mic, please.
Any vehicle parked in that last parking space blocks the view of vehicles coming down from the hill towards El Camino, the corner on the right-hand side. It blocks the view of anybody standing on the sidewalk, and also, anyone standing on the sidewalk, because the view is blocked, can't see the traffic coming down towards them until they get out past that vehicle, you know, off the sidewalk, out to the vehicle. So if that parking, that last parking space were removed, it would improve the situation.
All right.
Yes.
Thanks for sharing that.
Thank you.
Parvies, could you respond to the suggestion that we have a flashing red and instead of a flashing yellow?
Just flashing red cannot be installed at the intersection. Flashing reds or red light for pedestrians has to be installed at mid-block, not at the intersection, because there are a lot of problems with that, create major liability, create accidents, so cannot be red.
Okay, thank you. All right, council members, any discussion?
Oh, I reviewed this, and again, as I've said before, I've driven up and down the street many, many times in the last 20 some odd years. I think, I think we need to look at this in steps, and quite honestly, I think the first step would be to take item B, close the intersection, don't take out the lights yet, don't, just, in other words, you can turn them off, but don't tear them out, but just basically close that intersection, it's minor cost according to Parvies, and for, say, 90 days or a period of time, whatever works, and see how the traffic works, how the pedestrian works, how it all comes into play. If there's no change, if the world doesn't fall apart, maybe that's the easiest and simplest solution, and then we can move on to some of these others. I hesitate to spend 12, 14,000, 200,000, whatever, when we're not sure that even those are going to solve the issue. And again, that's my idea, that we would go in steps, and the first step being B for, say, a period of 90 days.
Okay. Would you like to weigh in?
I actually concur with Bob's comments. The one thing that sticks in my mind is the notion of people feel like they're safe in a crosswalk, and I think that what we're facing here is the fact that people aren't safe in crosswalks. When you step off the sidewalk into a crosswalk, you're still stepping into a potential safety issue, and I know, I see people sort of right there by Walgreens on El Camino, there's a crosswalk, and the bus drops them off, and then they still, you know, kind of are dodging cars as they're trying to pass El Camino. So clearly, it's not a safe, it's not a safe situation the way it is right now, but I'm trying to balance that along with traffic flow as people are coming down, down San Carlos Avenue as well. And my recommendation would be to option B, just remove it for the time being, again, monitor feedback, monitor public comments, and really see what impact it has, and then if need be, we can revisit this.
Okay, thank you.
Well, with, from the start, when I looked at this, I always thought, we should just put a light there, just, you know, and air on the side of safety. My concern with putting a light there is really, it's partly a financial issue, because it's very expensive, and obviously, we have limited funds right now. I don't think any half-measures are the right thing to do, I think we need to do either close it or put the light there. I was kind of curious to hear other council members' take on the situation tonight. I do feel like the potential of closing it, and really closing it, making sure that nobody feels like they can cross the street at that point, I think there's visibility issues, not just parking ones, I think that there's other visibility issues that would take a light to enable people to actually cross there. So in going out there and revisiting it, after thinking about this notion, I think, I could be persuaded to say, let's take, let's take the next measure, closing the intersection, and seeing if the pedestrian and bicycle traffic can flow to the other lighted intersections, make sure nobody knows, everybody understands they shouldn't cross this place, because I think the speeds are high there and visibility is tough there. I like the idea of 90 days, I'd be curious to hear staff's feedback on that as a time period to evaluate it, and see where we go from there. Frankly, if there's a, if there's any continued issues or problems there, I'll be the first one to get in line and say, let's put a light there. So I'd be willing to give, given council's thoughts and opinions on this, I'd be willing to give the cross its due before we go to the light, given all things considered, I should say.
Thank you.
Matt?
Well, I don't see this as being a problem at a intersection, at one particular intersection, albeit we've had an accident at that one intersection. I look at this as a project area, meaning, I look at it as, when you're driving from the Belmont area towards San Carlos, on San Carlos Avenue, and as you're coming into town, there are a number of places where people pick up speed, get going fast, and they don't slow down until they get right into town. Part of it is, when you're going that direction, it's generally downhill. And I think we've, we've got safety issues all up and down the line if you figure that route. And what I mean by that is, if you back up all the way to Devonshire and Wellington, which is the same intersection, but it's, you know, Wellington one way and Devonshire the other, we've got schoolchildren in that area trying to cross the street in the morning. If you ever go down there, if you come down Wellington, like I used to when I lived up on Shelford and Buckland, you come down there, and there's kids all over the place, parents all over the place, trying to get across the street and drop kids off and so on and so forth. So we got, we've got a situation there. And then as you come into town, well, when you get to Alameda, there's also three opportunities to cross there at that intersection, at least two, I think. Is it two or three, Parvies? I guess you can't cross Alameda, but you can cross San Carlos Avenue twice.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
You want to help me out there?
You can cross Alameda.
Twice, north and south.
Alameda, thirteen intersection, so Alameda you can cross, San Carlos Avenue, yes.
So there's a three-way crossing there?
Yes.
Okay, so you've got that situation, and quite frankly, there is a fair amount of activity there, especially if you watch that intersection on the weekends, you see people out walking, going downtown and so forth, and trying to get across there. And I know, I remember when I was campaigning and walking San Carlos Avenue, I got a lot of comments about that particular intersection. You get down to Cedar, you've got Central Middle... You get down to Cedar, you've got Central Middle School and the park feed into that intersection. You get to Chestnut, you've got the senior center and the library. You get to Elm, you've got City Hall and the Pacific hacienda. You get to Walnut, you've got Pacific hacienda and Ruler Plaza. And then, of course, you get to downtown. So I look at the whole thing. That's why I was asking, how much is it per crossing? Because I did a little math, and if you did this at each of those intersections, and I suppose at most of those, perhaps not at Devonshire, but at all the others, you'd have to do this north and south crossing.
Correct.
You might be able to get away with, I think, at Chestnut, there's one crossing right now, so maybe you could get away with one crossing there as well. So you might be looking at anywhere from ten to fourteen crossings. Well, at fourteen thousand apiece, that's less money than putting in a light, a traffic light at Chestnut, which the city engineer does not recommend. And probably for good reason in terms of slowing down or stopping traffic, bringing traffic to a stop, having backup situations and so forth. But we could do markings like this, and if you want to go into it, you know, put your toe in the water, then maybe we do it at, you know, something like Laurel, Walnut, Elm, Chestnut, and Cedar, closer to the downtown. And I can tell you what this does. If you drive down Santa Cruz Avenue in Menlo Park, they've done this. And I've said this before, and I'll repeat it. As you come into Menlo Park and you hit these kind of markings on Santa Cruz Avenue, you begin to feel like you're going too fast. Because every time you cross one of these, you get this sort of thing, you know, that goes on visually, not sound-wise, but visually, you get this, you know, something going by you. And it's just like you've said, Mr. Metari, about trees planted and so forth. You can do visual things that slow down the driver because they see this repetition going on. And I think this would be the ideal solution. Now, how much we want to spend on it, how far we want to go with it, I don't know. But again, I just want to repeat, I do not see this as an issue of one intersection. It's San Carlos Avenue, you could say, from El Camino all the way up into at least Devonshire, Wellington.
Thank you.
I would speak in favor of solving the problem. I think that's why we're here, and that's why it's on the agenda. And I don't think closing it solves a problem, nor do I think striping it solves a problem. No, I think even flashing a red light solves a problem, although I would prefer that to a flashing amber light. We've had an accident, we're all aware of that. I've heard reports, there are very few seniors that actually cross that, but I see them, and I don't count them, but I see them. And if I see a few of them, there's got to be a lot more. I think taking it out of circulation really inconveniences those who use it to get to the senior center. And we like to call it our adult community center, but believe me, when you're in there, these are older folk, and they don't move very quickly. So expecting them to go to Cedar or to Elm and cross and then come back will be, I think, a great injustice for them and for their ability to move around town. So I, after all the discussion we've had, and it's been going on for quite a while, I would like to solve the problem, spend the money, put a light in. I don't think it creates a traffic congestion problem. We can synchronize this in a sense that if we want to keep traffic moving, you can go from one green to the next green, but you ultimately stop everything so people can get through, and they have an opportunity to go at their own pace and complete the crossing. So I see that as the only way to solve it, a stop-gap measure, you know, and may or may not be successful, but it doesn't, to me, get the job done. That would be my take on it.
Mr. Mayor, through the chair, if I could, I agree with you that solving the problem is what we're trying to do. And as probably Vice Mayor Lewis said also, I would be in favor of putting in a light also, but at two-hundred thousand dollars, I'm not sure, honestly, and with all due respect, I'm not sure it's the value. By closing this intersection, you stop people from walking across. And all I'm offering is a motion to do it for ninety days. I'm not saying forever. I'm just saying to do it for ninety days. And if there's, if that solution doesn't work, I would be right with you, along with Vice Mayor Lewis, to put in a signal on this. But I just feel that it's a step basis. Before we go out and spend that money, I think it's prudent to take a look. And again, we've gone through it for, I don't know how many, well, I've been there for twenty-two years, and then I know ninety days could be one day too many. But I just feel it's a prudent step to give it a test. We're not spending that much money. It's a nominal cost. If it doesn't work out, I'll be right with you. But I'm just, I believe before we spend the amounts of money that we're speaking about, I think we should, I think we should take a shorter step, so.
In response to that, I would just say that we're in the business, I believe, of encouraging pedestrian transport around town. We want to encourage people to move around out of their cars. We want to encourage them to get from point A to point B. I don't think starting to block intersections or take out intersections is a good move in that direction. So I appreciate the advice on ninety days. However, I think when you start to see people crossing, getting around a barrier, moving across the street, middle of the block, wherever they have to, because they're not going to go to the corner, they'll all come home pretty quick, that we've got to do something else. And I think better to do something now than to wait and do something else later.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I like my idea.
No, I know you don't.
However, you are the mayor, and, you know, we, as a council, voted on, I know that, but you are the mayor, and we voted that to make you our fearless leader. And I'll jump on board with you, with the light. So you've got my vote for the light. Because I agree, I agree with Mr. Grusilli's concern about spending money. However, I don't think this is a thing to look at where we, you know, do a stop-gap measure and so forth. I think we have to solve it. And I also agree with you, it's a quality-of-life issue. And we heard that in the interviews tonight, and the one fellow talked about, you know, the city of good living. And that's a guiding principle. I think the man made a good point. And your point about seniors, I too see them cross there, and to close it for them, I think would be an injustice. And so if we're not going to do the striping, I'd rather see, put in a traffic signal, and let's give, let's give more weight to the pedestrian and the cyclist than the automobile when it's time we started doing that.
Do we have the statistics from the senior center? How many people like to cross at that crossing to come to the facility?
We don't have to see how many people would like to cross, but from all the membership, there are five members who live directly across the street, but the rest of them come from all different directions.
I'm just, I guess, have we done any other informal survey? Who would prefer to have, you know, use that as pedestrian crossing for the senior center? I'm just trying to go to the point of that's the local facility, because this is, to me, this isn't a vote for or against pedestrian safety or encouraging, I mean, in my opinion. I think both of these will help with the measure. But anyway, do we have a sense? Because it seems like we're sort of...
One thing that we're talking about, closing the ninety days, actually, we cannot proceed with that. We have to comply with California Vehicle Code. This intersection has to be posted, that we will be, is considered for closure, and we have to give people thirty-day notice, and have a hearing, and have the people come. And then that's when you find out who is crossing, who wasn't. And we would recommend, if you go that direction, we will post it, give thirty-day notice, and have a hearing at the Transportation and Circulation Commission, get the input from the residents, and bring it back to the council.
To me, that's, again, I only threw ninety days out as I had no idea what the law requires or anything, but it's just a testing to see if there are five people or five hundred people. And to me, if we're going to spend two-hundred thousand dollars on a signal, then I'm going to back off and say, then we're going to look, as Councilmember Grocott just said, he went down each one of those intersections, then if we're going to spend two-hundred, I'll spend four-hundred if I need to, to make that the safest city or the safest street in the world. I really believe that it's an incremental thing. And as Vice Mayor Lewis said, obviously, this is not a for senior or against senior or for pedestrian, at least in my mind, or against pedestrian. It's a safety issue, and to me, a common sense issue of let's go in increment. And if we have a hearing and nobody cares, then it doesn't make any difference if there's a crosswalk there or not. And that's all I'm trying to get to. And if there's a hue and cry, and there should be one there, as I said, I'll be the first one to vote with that, along with some of these other issues that maybe to increase, to help the entire street go down.
I would also, I mean, I want to jump on board Matt's thought about it being an entire project. I do think the speeds are too great coming down that area, and I do think it's intimidating to cross that street. So, but I wouldn't, again, rather than a single measure, I do think we need to look at it in its entirety, and I agree with Councilmember Grusilli, that I would vote for spending more money to really take care of the issue and do this to incorporate. And I think it's wonderful, there's a public hearing process, because we can vet this issue if we go this direction.
Any other comments? Is there a motion?
I would move that we select safety measure Option B and notice it for public hearing.
Second motion. Okay, I guess that's all you need, Parvies, to carry forward?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Teal Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Grusilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
I will go along, yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Davids?
I must say, no. I'd prefer to have a traffic light and move on. And with that, we will move on to Item 9B, consideration of amending the San Carlos Municipal Code, Section 3.12, regarding contracts and resolution establishing a registry for personal contract services.
Mr. Mayor, you have before you an ordinance tonight which will amend our current purchasing ordinance. And just so everyone is clear, this is for supplies and services. It's not for public works projects like streets or public buildings, which require a public bid process under the Public Contracts Code. Everything goes to the lowest bidder, responsible bidder in a public works project. This is for the mundane things from, you know, pencils to services, professional services. We have an ordinance in place. It was, it was adopted back in nineteen ninety-five. We've had some amendments over time. We increased, it used to be twenty thousand dollars was the cutoff before we came to the council. Anything under twenty thousand dollars was approvable by the city manager. We increased that to fifty thousand dollars a few years back. At the same time, in responding to grand jury report about consultants and this whole process, we amended the code in a couple of respects for peer review and with respect to not having staff, consultant staff participate where they were involved in getting together an RFP, which is one of the items that I know Councilmember Lewis raised, and actually, that has to be, it shows it being crossed out, but it should be in. And I'll point that out when we get there. Okay. Go the other way. Part of the reason for this long, I mean, we've been in the process of trying to amend Section 312 now for about three of my annual performance reviews, I think. We wanted to vet the process slowly, make sure everybody was on board, and I'm hoping we are with what we have before you now. And it was not clear necessarily when we'd get bids and quotes for things, you know, do you have to get up, go out and seek three vendors if you're just going to spend, you know, four thousand dollars or something like that, if you want to get it fast? We're trying to clarify that with the amendments in this ordinance. It wasn't exactly clear how to apply, how we were going to apply for professional services, like engineers, planners. The code, at the present time, simply talks about consultants. And we've tried to clarify between professional services and non-professional services. So just briefly going through some of the changes, I know you have the staff report in front of you. We modified the definitions section. Now quote is the same as bid, is the same as proposal. We understand that we're all speaking the same language. Services, again, have been further defined, as I indicated, and clarified as between professional and non-professional services. So the finance director, every place we had finance director in the code, it's now been changed to the administrative services director, which is the name, which is the person in charge of that department at the present time. Purchases by the administrative services director can be made by the administrative services director, all by the city manager when we're under fifty thousand dollars. Procedures can be written by the city manager or the city managers designate, which will probably be the case, Jeff. The supplies and non-professional services, we've grouped these together. So we have supplies and non-professional services, all under this same heading with the various amounts. So first group goes from five hundred to five thousand, and it requires three price checks before, if they are available. Councilmember Grocott, who commented on the changes that were made, came up with some good suggestion that that's why we added the language, that except where three don't exist. If there aren't three people, three bidders for the particular supplies or services, then you don't have to go out and get three. If three don't, so if there's a sole source in addition, that sole source can be gone to for that particular service or supply. And the same thing with five thousand and fifty thousand dollars, but then we get to fifty thousand or more, which comes to the city council. And again, we'll seek three or more quotes or bids or proposals unless those three somehow don't exist. You don't have to get this competitive three-bid process. There are certain exceptions, and the exceptions are listed in the ordinance. Takes three votes of the council are necessary, three, that means not just a quorum, but three of you here voting for the non-competitive award, where the bid would cause some unnecessary delay or expense, if you can use another governmental entity for that supplier service, or where it's a sole source. An emergency exists, however, all we have to do is get a quorum of the council together, and a majority of that quorum can take care of authorizing that expenditure. And there's also in the code, if for some reason we couldn't get the council together, the city manager or the administrative services director could spend the money, even over fifty thousand dollars, but then they have to come back to you at the very next meeting when available and report on that. We do have a section for competitive bids, where we're going to use this competitive bid process. And we've increased the notice time from ten days to fifteen days. And we're going to post it, City Hall, we're going to put it on the website, we're going to send out email notice, and we're going to publish, and we increased the publication time from five days to fifteen days. Brian indicates that we now have a bid list, people who are interested in bidding on any supplier service that comes up. They just want to know. It's like nine hundred and ninety are on our list at the present time. So we send out like an email, website notice, nine hundred and ninety get it, and we get something like a hundred and ninety who also want to know who received the award, and they get notified of that. So, I mean, it's a public process for spending the public's money, as it should be, but there are a lot of folks out there who do follow this. And we changed the, you'll notice, number eight bids. Bids can be sent in by email, phoned, by fax, by mail, and we took out telegraph. That was a throwback from another era, I'm afraid. Then we have professional services. This has been a major change in terms of this ordinance. We've defined professional services, and I just want to indicate that the council has a change for tonight, two things. Number one is to add legal auditing and planning, in addition to we have engineering, all kinds of engineering services here, but I think these should be highlighted. It says, you know, not limited to, but I think these should be called out. And we're going to add back in the section that was taken out as far as consultant staff not participating in any RFP that they would otherwise help to prepare. That language will be put back in. So those are two changes. Again, we'd seek three or more proposals for when it's five thousand and up. If it's below five, then we could do a price check kind of thing and get the services on a faster basis. City managers authorized up to fifty thousand dollars, and above that, it would be the city council. There are some exceptions, and they're listed in the ordinance. I'd like to call your attention to two. One is renewal of existing contracts. This is an issue that you might want to talk about, whether it's an audit contract, a planning contract, engineering. whether it's an audit contract, a planning contract, engineering attorney contracts. Some existing contracts are there, and they may be reviewed, but they're not necessarily going out, they don't necessarily go out for an RFP each time and each year they come up for review. The second one is the proposal with past demonstration of ability. And I'd point out someone like in planning services, EIP, that has done environmental impact reports for us and some planning consultant consulting. There are outside legal services. We've gone to a couple of firms that have proven very valuable to us, say, for example, in the Say-so lawsuit. And in terms of the help that we've gotten with the development agreement at the present time, again, these are proposals with past demonstration of ability. They're, instead of going out for RFP, you want to go to, it's almost like a sole source. It's not a sole source, but it's someone that you know, it's for professional services. And again, these are services that it's not necessarily the dollar figure involved, but your ability to rely on their performance of the services. So one of the changes is the resolution. So you have before you the ordinance, and you also have a resolution. Resolution was a suggestion that came from our city manager, comes from his prior city in La Quinta. It deals with setting up a registry of qualified firms that you annually update. City manager would put together a committee of senior staff to develop a short list of qualified firms in each area, such as, let's say, soils reports, things like that. That could be also in planning. It applies to contracts of 5,000 or more. So your actions tonight are, take a preliminary vote, perhaps if there's any discussion on an item that you may or may not wish to include, then introduce the ordinance as modified and adopt the resolution. Be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Any questions for Bob?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just before we go into questions, I just wanted to clarify, since I was included in the staff report, as having been involved in this process, I just want the council to know that my activities were to look at this ordinance in terms of sort of the flowchart of it, if you think of it as an if-then statement. And that's where I felt like it was broken, and I was encouraging that we review this ordinance. And so I began discussions with the city attorney on that. So we were looking at the logic of it, and then the amounts and persons responsible, in terms of the dollar amounts, and then the persons responsible, he already mentioned, you know, we had in there finance director, and we changed that to administrative services director. So I say all that just to clarify to the council, I did not participate in sole source policy setting or anything like that.
No, no.
No, that's fine, Bob. But I just wanted to give comfort to the council that, you know, my role was just working with Bob on the logic of it and the editing, some of the wording and so forth.
Very good. Thank you. Do you have any questions or comments on the end result?
Well, I've got some things that, I've got some further editing, and I've got some questions and things to discuss, yes.
Why don't you take the lead?
How would you like me to do that? Just the, just questions for staff right now?
I think so, yes.
Because I've got, as I said, three things. I've got editing, questions for staff, some editing, and then--
Let's go to questions for staff first.
--and then discussions, okay. The questions I had have to do with, I think, most, let me just turn through here one at a time. Sorry. The first one was the, and I think Bob already answered this, we went from 10 to 15 days then, and--
Yes, on the competitive bid.
And now, when it says 15 days, are we talking then three weeks? Are we talking actually 15 days?
Days.
Days, okay.
We have 10-day calendar days now.
Can you reference the section on that, Matt?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I should have done that. I'm at 3.12.210.
210, okay.
Under competitive bids notice.
Thank you.
Okay. I had a question also about, let's see, these don't have page numbers on them. 3.12.260, service contracts, professional services.
Mm-hmm.
So you find that section, and then you come down to, on the opposing page, once you find it. And if you look under solicitation, it's in the middle, it's in the middle of the page.
Is it like C or--
Yes, under C1, thank you, yes.
C1?
Solicitation of professionals shall be by verbal, written, or published request. And that's, it's saying, I think here is talking about the city manager can make a solicitation in that manner. What it doesn't seem to say is when they respond, can they, if there's a verbal request, then can they make a verbal reply, or do they have to make a written reply? So this is where we're talking about contracts for minor services, $50,000 or less. And so the city solicits these proposals, and it says they can be verbal, written, or published requests. And get at least three if they're available, so forth. And the city manager shall review and rank the proposals. The city manager may award and execute contracts for minor services. But what it doesn't say is anything about when someone's contacted, do they have to give a written? Do we have to have something in writing, or can it just be a verbal?
I think it's left to the discretion of the city manager, depending on what kind of services and how much money we're spending. For example, under B, some major services, 50,000 or more, they're going to come to the city council, it's going to be three written proposals--
Right.
--if available. Under the C, which is from, you know, minor, we call it minor services, again, it's left to the discretion of the city manager how to solicit the professionals. For examples, Fujis needs someone to, to bring someone in for a small project because, a planning project because of a conflict of interest by a planning department. They could go, I mean, instead of sending for written proposals, they could call two or three of the planning firms that contract services, it might be $5,000 or $10,000 or less, and just get someone in to act on that particular minor planning matter, like say a use permit or something like that.
Okay.
So that, our suggestion is you leave it like that, and we'll see how it works.
It seems to me that the city's purchasing policy would preclude them issuing a purchase order or purchase request that's not in writing, that's based on a verbal. It just, I can't imagine that being part of the policy. But I don't, again, I, it seems to me--
We don't--
--it ought to be left to the city managers and the administrative services directors' policies of how they actually implement this on a day-to-day basis.
I would deal with just a proposal. If we're going to have a contract with someone, it will be in writing. I mean, unless it's something very minor for services.
Okay.
Especially in the professional services. We always have. I mean, I think I must review a couple of hundred contracts a year, I think, in terms of my review and the city manager's signing, even the ones that go to council. So I think we're pretty thorough about that.
Okay. Well, I take your answer. I think we might want to discuss that at some point, perhaps, maybe not, if no one else has a concern yet. But I do ask the question. And then my last question, I believe, has to do with these exclusions. There's quite a few exclusions. This is the last page of the ordinance, 3.12.370. So the first exclusion is to public works projects. Is that, and it cites some kind of California Public Contract Code?
Yes.
So if we have a public works project, we can't go through any kind of, they can choose--
Oh, we do, but it's a whole different separate process, aside from purchasing supplies and services. That's a state mandated procedure. We already have a written process for that. Matter of fact, we have a section in our code, I think it's three, chapter 313. It's the next chapter, whatever it is, that covers public works projects. And we have to follow the public's contracts code on that. And that's where you get the lowest responsible bidder.
Okay.
It's for a sidewalk project or even a large project. Has to be that way.
Okay.
But then I cover by this order.
Under D, it says to franchise rights, privileges, and so forth. I have no idea why that's an exception. If you could explain that?
Well, we have franchises with the utility companies. We have, it talks about licenses, permits, cable TV. We have, Brian, help me out.
I was just going to say, we have fiber optic, wireless, cellular, I mean, there's a whole series of them.
Through the chair, isn't it just like, isn't it just like public works, where you have a whole different set of rules to follow?
Yeah, correct.
Or not?
In some cases. In some cases, it's in state law.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't understand, excuse me, I didn't understand what was included under the umbrella of franchise.
Franchise, sure.
Yeah, so that's what I was getting to. So thank you for that. And then item G, to the hiring of or contracting for personnel, whether as temporary seasonal or permanent employees. And how does that work? I mean, we have, you know, this, to me, is important because we use a lot of, we still have people who kind of look like staff people, but they're not, they're contractors. So does this apply or doesn't apply, or what?
Well, take, for example, the temporary folks that hired in Parks and Rec during the summer. That's not in a bid process or a RFP process. Anybody else hired on our, you know, follows our civil service, you know, system or--
For instance--
The so-called competitive service has its own rules and regulations--
Okay.
--for hiring public employees.
For example, then--
You know, we post notices and send things out, but it's not this bid, this process of supplies and services, which really for outside third persons who are either providing services or supplies. In the case what you mentioned is, we're either hiring a policeman, a public works person, a park and rec person on a permanent basis, in which case it comes under the competitive service and there's a process to follow. Or they've been hired, I suppose, on a temporary basis to work in one of the departments as an employee, not on a contract basis. I mean, they're hired as an employee--
But there is a distinction between an individual than, if I hear what you're saying, and say we hire a consultant. Let's say we want to make a movie, and we look over here, and Brad's got his own little consulting firm to make movies. In that case, he may be an individual, but he's, we would be hiring as a consultant. So the consultant would fall under, like we're hiring a company, not an individual. Is that correct?
Provide services, correct.
So in that case, this, this section would apply?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure of that.
But Brad's already under contract, so--
I know.
[laughing]
Trying to come up with a cheap example. Okay, that answers the question I have.
Okay, all right. Who's next?
I'll go next. I just had two. First is in Section 3.12.070 under delegation. And it's really more of a language where it says the administrative services director may delegate authority to other city officials. I would think that that should be other city staff or other city employees. City officials, to me--
Sure.
--is more--
We can clarify, we can--
--an elected official, but--
This is holdover--
Yeah, I figured it was--
Language and with city--
In some other city, probably, an official is probably something different. Okay, that was an easy one. The second one actually has to do with Section 3.12.180, the emergency authority.
180.
And I'm not quite sure how, because you've got emergency authority, it's under the title of the emergency authority of the administrative services director. However, it's also in that same section allowing authority to the city manager or the administrative services for anything above $50,000. And this is, actually, I'll pose this question to my fellow council members. My thought is, is that I want to keep the city manager on the hook for anything above $50,000. So that or should be an and. Or we should just leave it as the city manager or his delegate. But that, at the end of the day, it's the city manager who reports into the city council and for emergency purchases over $50,000, I think. I'd like to keep the city manager on the hook for that.
And take the administrative services director out?
And take the administrative services director out.
Which paragraph are you--
Sorry, B.
180B.
So anything below could be the city manager or the administrative services director. But anything above $50,000, I think, really ought to be the city manager or his, you know, delegate, like sometimes when--
Or designee.
Or designate, when the city manager travels, he has a designate in his working, on his behalf, just in case something happens. And I think we should be consistent. And then actually, there's another, and I don't know if it's duplicative or not, under Section 3.2.260E4, you're talking again about for the same type of thing, the city manager may authorize solicitation, selection, warrant, execution by the most expedient method. We're time is of the essence to prevent an emergency. And so it's almost, I'm wondering, before it wasn't, they weren't consistent, then, but if we make the first one just city manager, then I think we've got consistency there. Does that make sense?
If you change--
If we change section 180--
Change B.
180.
180B to just be--
City manager or designate.
--the city manager or designate. And then Section 4 should be the same, I'm sorry, E4 under Section 260 should be the city manager or his designate may authorize. Because again, it's, you hope you never have to need it, but in case you do--
That's okay with the council. Got it.
Okay, and that actually was my only two comments.
Thank you. Brad?
Well, just to be specific about what Mr. Landau was speaking to before, I was looking at the deleted section under--
I'll point it out. 260--
312.260. Formerly, the deleted section is 312.270. Is that--
No, I was looking at 312.270, page 13 of the copy that I have. It's the second full sentence. It says, where the city determines to select the professional consultant services under this section, any staff member involved would, shall not be allowed to submit proposals. We're going to make that 260G, and that will be back in.
So just for the council purposes, on our copy that we got, it's, it's the box in the upper right-hand corner, it says deleted 3.12.270, request for steel proposals, the second half of that paragraph.
And where is that going?
A.
It'll go just up above 260. We'll put it under peer review. That'll be G.
So F, I'm sorry, Bob, can you repeat that on the--
We're going to take that sentence, which is one of the things we added after the grand jury ordinance, and we'll move it up to 260. At the very end, we'll, this, it goes, you know, ABC to EF. We'll make this one G.
After peer review?
It'll become, it'll become item G.
Just to clarify, it's the sentence starting, where the city determines to select the professional--
It was the amendment that we made.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out where it's going.
So see where F, peer review? It'll be the next item G.
That's right.
Yeah, I'm trying. Okay, let me find peer review. Oh, okay. So it'll be G?
Yeah.
Through the chair, may I just ask a following question? Is there a reason why that would apply only to professional services and not goods and other types of things?
I suppose it could. I mean--
It just seems to me that, I mean, the reason it's come up under professional services is because of past history. But, you know, if you had somebody who had another side business or something, making widgets, and we needed a lot of widgets, or, you know, someone in Parks and Rec selling plants, I don't know. It just seems to me--
Hard to think about where we'd come on in terms of supplies or non-professional services. I mean, if it's going to come up anywhere, it would come up under the professional services--
Generally, you think so.
--in that broad heading for those kind of services. If you'd like, we can add, we can edit back in--
No, it's right.
I guess the only thing I could see in that regard, there was some product specification that we, that somebody was steering to some very specific product that they were involved in, but that may be
Stretch.
I don't know, might be, but what are your thoughts?
I think we should actually put it in under operational procedures, section 3.12.060. And just preclude, just leave it under operational procedures, that basically stipulates that employees are not gonna bid on things that they've prepared RFPs for.
That's fine.
Where did you put it, I'm sorry?
Section 060. That actually speaks to your earlier question, Matt, about the, whether responses are in written, or verbal form, or whatever. That's the operational procedures that would be stipulated.
I'm sorry, does that feel like that's spot for it? With the language that's there now, it just, it doesn't seem as specific.
Well, this way it would apply to, you know, professional services and non-professional services. It's, at least it's upfront, so, as opposed to giving it its entire own section, I'll make it an A and a B. And maybe put a slash in the heading, so that we call it out.
Okay.
All right?
Anything else? All right, Bob?
No, I think everybody's brought up points I have.
May I go through the edits, or you have some stuff?
Go right ahead.
Okay, trying to make these as quick as possible. Let's see. Okay, edits, this is under 3.12.070. It says currently, that the administrative services director may delegate authority to purchase supplies or services, and the disposal supply, surplus supplies, to other city officials. And
We're gonna change that, yeah.
That needs to be reworded, because it, what it needs to say is, the administrative services director may delegate authority to other city officials, or, as Ms. Dory mentioned earlier, city staff, or whatever, to purchase, then to dispose, if such delegation is deemed necessary, et cetera. The problem with the sentence is that it's, the phrase to other city officials is in the wrong place in the sentence.
You wanna move it up to after may delegate?
Yes, the administrative services director may delegate authority to other city
That's fine.
Staff, and then the rest of the sentence flows fine.
Employees, right.
You see what I'm saying? Okay, so that's one.
Actually, that brings up an interesting point, because employees is actually an employee of the city, versus staff, maybe someone who is on staff, that is not necessarily an employee. So, we should be specific about which, what our intention is. And I would look to the administrative services director to let us know.
She have who purchases? In terms of staff?
I'd leave it at city staff, actually.
Yeah, I agree.
City staff.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Next page, under 3.12090. In cases where the purchase of supplies or non-professional services is made to the most advantageous bid. I think the word, instead of made, should be awarded. Okay. On the page that is, let's see, it's 3.12170. And you turn the page, and there's items A, B, C, and D. And I think, just as a matter of flow and logic, if we flip C and D, because A and B are talking about affirmative vote of three council members, B, by affirmative vote of three council members. And if we move D up to be C, then it will also be by affirmative vote of three council persons. And then, what is now C, is talking about a quorum of council persons present at a council meeting, which is a different situation. And that particular situation then flows, or segues into 3.12180, which is emergency authorization.
Fine.
Okay.
Would it make sense, then, just to actually move C all the way down underneath 180, which is talking about emergency authority?
No, I'd like to keep it with the exceptions.
Okay.
For the council.
And then, under 3.12190, under waivers, it says, in the second line, purchase of non-professional supplies or services, which is a different wording than we've used in the whole other parts. So, if we switch that to be purchase of supplies or non-professional services, we will be consistent with all our language throughout. Okay. Under 3.12260, under B1, the last sentence, it says, except where three proposals for the services required cannot be found to exist. Again, to be consistent with the language we've used throughout. I think the, instead of proposals, where three firms for the services required are not found to exist, which is the same language, again, that we've used throughout. And, in the next sentence, under item two, proposals shall be reviewed and ranked by selection
Excuse me, I think I'm gonna
Yes.
Go back to that.
Yes.
Instead of proposals, then let's refer to the
Firms.
Persons as, no, as proposers.
Oh, okay, sure.
Propose.
Where three proposers?
Ors, proposors. Got it. And we're making notation of all of these changes, so we don't have to go back and repeat it when we go to, Christine and I have it all down. As modified.
Yeah, I gave Christine two titles as well.
Never gonna be able to reiterate each one of them right now, but.
Actually, all of these, I did cover in an email, but apparently didn't come through for some reason, I don't know why.
No.
We're all enjoying the dialogue, but are you?
Almost done?
Okay. Or you wanna, some of this can be done offline with Bob.
Yeah, I've got one more. So, let's just finish, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Okay. The next sentence under item two, or sentence two, so, B2.
Yes.
Proposals shall be reviewed and ranked by a selection committee appointed by the city manager. So, take appointed by the city manager, and move it up. So, it should read, proposals shall be reviewed and ranked by a selection committee appointed by the city manager, and composed of staff members, so on and so forth.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. Anyone else? Well, well done, you thought this, you may have been finished with this, but hey, you're gonna have to see it one more time.
Now we have
Can we actually just move introduction of it?
Do sit, all right, and you bring it back in the file for?
Next time for adoption, yeah, we have the chair.
Are we gonna have any discussion on these items?
Pardon?
Are we going to have any discussion?
Yeah, if you have more, sure. You have something else?
To discuss? Yeah, amongst council members, sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Here we go, let's try to finish it up, and then we'll take a little break.
Okay. Covered that one. The only thing that we have to discuss is, and the city attorney rightly pointed this out, as being something we might want to discuss. Let me find what section this is under. I guess this is under Item three, when is this, E3?
Bingo.
Is that right?
Wait a minute, I had bingo.
The city council may authorize award and execution of service contracts with no competitive proposals, where the experience with the proposed service provider has demonstrated competence, and so forth, like he said, you know, if we have an attorney that we've used before, or whatever. And, I don't like doing business that way myself personally. I don't like getting cozy with anyone that, you know, I have a professional relationship with. However, I would throw in here, if we are going to go that direction, then I think it should at least require, similar to the emergency procedures, it should require affirmative vote of three council members, which means, you gotta have at least three council members at the meeting, and you have to have three votes. In other words, if only three council members show up at a meeting, and the item comes up, and two vote in favor, and that's, and one doesn't, it's not enough. You have to have the three votes, in other words, that majority vote.
Is this, are you suggesting for over $50,000, and under $50,000?
Well, no, I'm just saying, this item is just talking about when, a situation where we may say, well, regardless of the contract amount, you know, we've been using the same
No, no, I understand that, what you're talking about.
Okay.
So, you're saying regardless of the amount? Whether it's over or under $50,000, you would want council to vote on?
Well, in this section, it's not making any clarification on that particular point, it's just saying
Well, I understand, we can make clarifications where we want, but would you suggest that?
Yeah, I would think especially
Because you're making it more stringent, so would you make that stringent to under 50, or just over 50, I guess is the question?
I can tell you how I'd weigh in, I'd say that it's only for over $50,000, because I just think that the number of contracts that Bob alluded to, that, you know, maybe, for example, you know, Office Depot, or someplace like that, to buy, you know, office supplies, or some other small thing like that. I don't wanna have to see it coming before city council, future city councils, where you need to have all three vote on, you know, about 100% calendar items, type of thing.
I am, I may be driving somewhere on this, I think that's probably what you think as well.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and what I'm wondering is, isn't there gonna, going to be, and we would also, we would renew any contract over $50,000, the city council would review and vote on that anyway, is that correct?
Yeah, the intent was, is that if it's over 50, that it would come to the city council, if it's less than 50, it would be at the discretion of staff. And we would hope that we would have the flexibility at the staff level for less than $50,000, to make these exceptions consistent.
I got you, I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to get to, so if it's over $50,000, and we were gonna renew a contract, that would come to city council?
Correct.
That would come to city council, in what we have right now. That, that's why I'm just trying to understand what's here right now, it's my understanding that it is. And even if it was over $50,000, it was a sole provider, and you wanted to sold it, that would come to city council?
Yes.
Yes.
So, the way I understand this, is that currently exists in this, at over $50,000, which is what I think is where it's
Okay, that was not my understanding, my understanding of item three is, regards to the dollar amount, if, if, if we felt like, and I'm not sure who, you know, let's see. Yeah, as a council, we could say, man, we're not gonna go out for competitive proposals on this. Right, let's, let's just say, for instance, you know, we've got planning, okay? We've been using the same planners for years. We could say, well, we don't wanna upset the apple cart, we're not gonna go out for competitive proposals on this. And so, we're gonna take this exception, right here.
But, actually, it's not that case at all, because if it's over $50,000, they still need to come before council for approval of that.
Sure.
And then, we could bring it up at that point, that, you know, yes, we're happy with Colnan Associates, or, you know, whoever it may be. Or we could say, you know what, we really haven't been happy with the service, for whatever reason, so we'd like to push it back to staff, and ask them to bid it out.
Okay, that's what, I don't care for that kind of policy of
So, you would want to be automatically RFP'd and rebid at the conclusion of every contract?
That's right.
Over $50,000.
Right.
That's right. And if we're not going to have that, then I think that it should at least require a vote of three council members. A yes vote of three council members to
Like a supermajority vote.
Yeah, to authorize the exception. So, and again, the reason that kind of language is similar to what we have under the emergency measures, where if there's three council members that only show up, and you get a 2-1 vote, it doesn't move forward, because you have to have three votes. Regardless, it's not saying a quorum, it's saying, am I correct on that, Mr. City Attorney? Yeah. So
Let's put this to bed, though, before we move on, what's in place with the council in terms of mass suggestion?
I would, with all due respect, I don't think it's necessary. And I would like to just, because, you know, I, I think that what we're doing is just automatically forcing the people who are actually here, working day to day, on behalf of the city, to worry if, when their contract comes up in 12 months, if they should be looking for another city, or someplace else, where it's not going to be so much under the scrutiny. However, I do believe also, that, you know, the city manager has to maintain these relationships with these professional services contracts, where people are actually acting as if they are employees, on behalf of the city. And we, I'd much rather have them doing the things that they're being paid to do, rather than looking for contracts in other places. And I think we're gonna increase the amount of turnover.
However, if I may follow up on that, there's nothing in any of this that prohibits us from writing a contract, let's say, with a planning department, or a planning outfit, that's a three or five-year contract, or, but when that contract comes up, however long we make it for, then it should go back out to RFP.
Okay, others?
That's, that would be my, my point in that.
I, I would personally opt for the, I could, I would consider the compromise of a supermajority to continue a contract, but not force an automatic RFP at the conclusion of contract.
Bob?
Well, I, three votes is, and again, through the city attorney, three votes is not a supermajority to me, four votes is
I'm sorry, yes, I probably Three votes is the number we're looking for, though, right?
I mean, I apologize.
No, 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 I appreciate the clarification.
That's why, if you need three votes, well, I mean, I guess I could envision situations where there'd only be three or four of us up here. But, but for most of the contracts, that I think we would bid, we would have over $50,000, we'd all be here, and it would require three votes anyway, to pass it, because you need three votes, you can't, it's five of us. Now, again, you could make the case that there won't be five of us, you know, I see your point. I would be surprised if the city staff ever came to us with a contract over $50,000, and we weren't all here. Now, maybe that's happened, I don't, not in my two years, I don't believe it has, but maybe it has, I don't think it has in my time. And so, that's why I'm, I think it's already, it's already built into the program, I sort of, I tend to agree with Councilwoman Dory, that we're, we're, as long as it's over $50,000, it has to come to us, and it needs, it needs three votes anyway, because we, there are three of us there. I think the difficulty comes into play, is that if you have a one-year contract, or a two-year contract, you're gonna, it's not so much even to have the folks who are have the contract bid, it's the other folks who are out there, if we go through, and we, let's say, hire the same person three times in a row, in a six-year period, the fourth time, people are gonna go, Peter and the Wolf, or maybe it's not gonna take that long, and they're gonna go, we're not even gonna bother. So, then you're gonna, in a way, you could reverse the problem, you could create a bigger problem, nobody will bid on it, because they'll say, well, it's a fixed-end game, it's not gonna happen. So, I mean, I'm just giving you another situation.
And to add to that point, I think there's also a lot of staff time with each RFP, and the one- and two-year contracts as well.
I think the key, the key issue for me is, what's the limit? $10,000, $5,000, $50,000, a million dollars, whatever the limit is, that's the limit. Under $50,000, the staff takes care of it, over $50,000, we're required to do it. I mean, and again, I'm not saying 50's the magic number, I wasn't here for the 50, or maybe I was, and I forgot. But, I don't think I was here for the 50, but that's what it is now. Now, maybe that's the issue that should be brought up more than one or the other. So, it's hard for me, with all due respect, to support the change, I think it just, it speaks to it in the ordinance.
I would agree, I think we, I think we can stand on the language that we have, and I think it covers this properly. So, Matt?
Yes?
You're down on that one?
Okay. Well, with that, I would move introduction, and let's move forward on this, there's obviously been a lot of work, a lot of vetting. Bob, thank you very much, and let's, let's move on with it.
So, we have a motion for both the ordinance and the resolution?
I was going to take the resolution separately, but, so I'm just going with the ordinance right now. right now.
You need to speak the ordinance. Read it. You read the ordinance.
I do.
And the number two.
Thank God you're here.
Now Bob's gonna pick up. He's got all this planning commission experience.
So, the ordinance that we're introducing is ordinance number...
1392.
1392, and it is modifying chapter 3.12 of the San Carlos Municipal Code, purchasing of city supplies and services.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second.
Does that motion include the changes that we directed to staff?
Yes.
Probably so.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Teague Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes.
And we have resolution number 2007 dash...
57.
57?
Yes.
Is there a motion for...
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a roll call?
Councilmember Teague Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Councilmembers, we've not discussed this very much and I'm not in favor of it, so, no.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes.
Okay, that gets us to the next item. Before we address 10A, we're gonna take a five-minute break and...
Thank you, sir.
Doesn't mean that we're gonna go extra long on 10A, it's just we're gonna take a five-minute break. Division of South Bayside Waste Management Authority, request for proposals for garbage and recycling collection services and operation of the Shoreline Transfer Station and Recyclerie. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. I thought I'd give you a couple of quick highlights and then we'll turn over to Mr. McCarthy again from the SBWMA. Last October, the SBWMA Board approved recommendations for the components of an RFP, and there's basically two RFPs here. One is for garbage and recycling services for the 12-member agencies in the SBWMA, of which San Carlos is one, and the other is a RFP for operating the Shoreway facilities. I think the interesting thing to note here is several years ago, when the current franchise with BFI and later Allied came up, there was an automatic three-year renewal that was included in that document through some negotiations in exchange for guaranteed low rates at the Ox Mountain facility. That original agreement was extended for a four-year period, but at the same time, the SBWMA Board also voted to issue an RFP for this service after the current agreement with the extension expires in 2010. So that's what we're here to talk to you about tonight. Council will recall that in December, we came to you last year and got your agreement on the details of the services to be provided in this RFP, so tonight, what we're here to talk to you about is the actual RFP document itself. The intent is for each of the governing boards, starting tonight with both the San Mateo City Council and the San Carlos City Council, to begin reviewing the final RFP document. And once we have the comments from each of the 12 governing bodies, this document is scheduled to hit the street on November 1st. There are a couple of interesting aspects to this, both in general and also as it relates to San Carlos, as I'm sure the council is aware, in terms of the operation agreement for the Shoreway facility. The Shoreway facility, which includes both the transfer station and the recyclerie, is located in San Carlos, so this particular discussion is perhaps of higher interest to you than to some of the other communities. And actually, as you'll see by the design board here, the staff is prepared from SBWMA to talk to you a little bit about their vision of upgrading the Shoreway facility, moving from a, the current recycling system to so-called single-stream system, and also to incorporate some green features in the new building, which would include potentially lead certification and also solar panels. There's also some other green features, things such as asking the potential proposers of these services to look at clean vehicles such as natural gas versus diesel, things of that sort will also be looked at. In terms of the summary to the JPA, excuse me, the RFP documents, you'll see that there are a series of core services that are outlined for you, and there's also a series of other services. I wanted to highlight the fact that several of the green items that have been talked about at your previous meetings are now included in this document. And with that, let me turn it over to Mr. McCarthy from the SBWMA. He does have a PowerPoint to run through with the highlights and then he can field questions that you may have.
Thank you, Brian. Mr. Mayor and council members, it's a...
So Kevin, if you're here, who's over in San Mateo?
What's that? Oh, I was. It was a study session.
Well, you were, oh, very good.
Went quite well, so it'll be on set a few weeks, so. But hopefully you all will be the first to move this forward tonight. It's, I have to say, there is one small advantage to going last, since I'm a citizen here in San Carlos, I'm learning a lot about the city, sitting through your council meetings, so you maybe can lean on me someday for something, some knowledge. I'm gonna try to make this as quick as possible. Back in December, you did get a presentation, a much more detailed presentation outlining all of the services. Essentially, what I'm gonna talk about tonight is we've rearranged some things, we've moved some optional programs into core, we've made some changes in the last couple of months in the compensation approach and some of the other details. And I think what's important about that is most of the changes have been driven by comments from potential proposers. One of our core values was that, you know, the people that are gonna bid on these services are our customers and we need to know what they think about the RFP documents. So we received, I think, 50 to 60 pages of comments from proposers. So we're trying to strike a balance between what we think is a fair and competitive process with protecting our rights and trying to get the most competitive prices. So a lot of the changes were driven by that. As mentioned by Brian too, I'm gonna talk very, very briefly about these renderings. These are concepts. We have not hired an architectural firm yet to do the redesign work, but we wanted to give you a flavor of our thinking. This should not be something that we looked about, look at, look at as something that's sort of on the other side of town and it's not something that can be made into a nice facility. In fact, it really can be a jewel both financially, which it has been for the city, and be a jewel in terms of the environmental sustainability of the operation. Okay, in terms of previous actions, Brian really covered this, so back in December, you approved the services and contract terms. Just about two months ago, or six weeks ago, there were a series of changes, as I said, that came from comments from proposers, comments from staff, a lot of interaction that resulted in a revised version of the RFP documents. In terms of the Shoreway master plan, we always weave this into the discussion because it's sort of, it's a core component. Really, the most important takeaway is, until this facility is remodeled, or unless it's remodeled, we cannot begin to take the new type of recyclables, the single-stream recyclables. There's also a number of problems with the facility, which many of you are aware of in terms of traffic flow and circulation, impacts on neighbors. So in one fell swoop, we're really trying to dramatically transform this facility so it's ready for the future, not only in terms of improving the traffic, but being ready for the future programs. So there are a number of features that we're looking at. When we do hire an architectural engineering firm, we are requiring the firm to have a green building expert on their staff. We're not committing to lead certifying, but we're gonna evaluate it, we think we're gonna do it the right way, which is to look at it upfront and try to plan it into the construction. And it may be that we put green features in and we don't lead certify, but they make financial sense and they make environmental sense. The other important takeaway here is that sometime next, probably in the spring or summer, we're gonna come back to the member agencies for approval of issuance of new debt. We're currently estimating we'll need somewhere between $18 and $20 million in funding to pay for the full master plan improvements. There's an estimated rate impact of approximately 2.5% associated with that. Any issuance of new debt would require approval of 2/3 of the member agencies. So what we're trying to do is through a series of meetings like this, and we could certainly have a study session or something in the future, is explain more details, the features of the master plan so you understand that, as we sort of get to the point of having to make a decision about issuance of the new debt. So, once again, the master plan, so key features, we really see this as a community resource, so we, as sort of a core component of the design, we will have community meeting space, we will have an education center on the campus, and as much as we can, we will put green building features into the operation. Those pictures are terrible, they're the real ones, so you can take a look at those. Okay, the schedule, this schedule is just, it's not pretty to look at and it's, I know it's been frustrating for some council members because it's such a long, drawn-out process, but we're getting there, we're inching our way there. So the key milestones here is that if all goes well, we will release the RFP documents in November 1st. We will have the proposals back February, March, go through that evaluation process, and about a year from now, plus or minus a month or so, we will back before you with recommendations on contractor or contractors. We could end up with one collection company, we could end up with one serving the southern portion or northern portion, and a separate facility operator. So it could be anywhere from two to three companies that we'll be making recommendations on. So that'll occur about a year from now and then we'll start that process of you all deciding, if you agree with our recommendation, we would move forward negotiating with that firm and then making decisions about which services you want to add in and what kind of rate impacts that will have. In terms of the residential programs, I'm not gonna go through this in any great detail. I certainly will note that Councilmember Teague Doherty expressed her desire to have food waste pushed up, pushed up as a higher priority. One of the recommendations was to make residential food scrap a core program. We have, we got that suggestion from a number of folks, so as of now, the residential core collection services that are in the RFP documents reflect the single-stream collection, the use of carts for recycling garbage and organics, the addition of the used oil and the oil filters, the household battery program and cell phones, which we talked about earlier, and adding the food waste. It's not up here, but one of the core services is also the twice-annual on-call pickups. That hasn't gone away. As I said, I've tried to keep this brief and not list everything. Street sweeping, I just want to call attention to this, there are a number of member agencies, five or six, I believe, that are meeting to try to do a joint procurement effort. This is not really a core service of the solid waste industry. Solid waste companies like Allied don't view this as a profitable business and don't really want to be involved in it. We're better off seeking proposals from firms that specialize in this. So we're going to pursue a process and how, depending on how that plays out, whoever you pick, you can still keep doing what you're doing now in terms of the billing being done through the solid waste rates. Multifamily, once again, the program's very similar to residential in terms of single-stream, the continual be a food waste collection program. What's not mentioned up here, once again, just trying to reduce some time, is that there are a series of member agency services. There will be services that will be proposed in the contract for servicing all your public litter cans in part... litter cans in parks, parking lots, so there will be a service for the solid waste collection and recycling of that. I know that's kind of hit and miss now, but we understand that's sort of a core issue that's come up with chambers in numbers of cities with litter and those cans overflowing. So that, we are trying to address that by making sure that's a core service. There will be a standardized service that the contractor will have to provide for large venues in San Carlos and every other community. Right now, it's kind of hit and miss. There also will be shared recycling bins in downtown as a core service. So if small businesses don't have enough volume, say cardboard, they can team up with some other businesses and maybe get a joint container for cardboard. That will be a core service. I'll skip over this. I'll go through this quickly. In terms of the core process and contract terms, the major changes that we've talked about in the past is that the RFP does reflect two service districts, not just one like we have today. We also have made changes in the compensation approach. What's typical in the industry in California and in other large franchise markets in the United States is that it's more a fixed price, where a proposer gives you a price for the services, you negotiate the scope, but that sort of base price is only adjusted going forward based on indices, whether it's CPI, there are indices for wages, for fuel, and that's what we're proposing here. This is a dramatic change from what we have now, which is essentially, we go through a rate review process, look at the expenses, but for the most part, the expenses are approved, profit is put on top of that, and there really is not a lot of incentive for cost reduction. So in this model, the price that the contractor proposes, other than being adjusted for these various indices, that's the price they get. So there'll be a tremendous, I guess compared to now, a lot more rate stability and predictability going forward. One other thing to note, if any of you have really dug down into these documents, or if this just comes up in discussion, we've made a series of assumptions in the RFP about the size of the containers that residents will have, about the use of labor, what the labor rates are. Essentially, what we're trying to do is level the playing field so that all of the proposers bid with the same numbers. What I don't want you to think is when we get through this process, ultimately, you still hold the final say as to what the cart sizes are for residences. There's a lot of decisions that you will make, but if you happen to get down deep into the document, you wouldn't, you know, don't be alarmed that we're saying that certain things have to be this way, but we put some standardized numbers in the documents for the purposes of releasing the RFP. Now, high environmental enhancement, so this has been talked about, so we are requiring that companies give us proposals for alternative fuel. I am happy to say that in approximately two months, we're thinking in October, there will be an announcement about what we hope to be full rollout of the use of biodiesel in the existing collection fleet. This is something we're working closely with Allied. Chad Wilson from Allied is here tonight. It's something that hasn't been talked much about, but there will be very significant reductions in greenhouse gas by switching to biodiesel. So hopefully, we'll have a press conference to invite you to in October. And most of these other points have been covered. Finally, what everybody wants to know about in terms of the rate impact, what I wanted to just walk you through is that the only estimates you've seen in the past have been this 3.22 to 10.75. That was sort of a first blush, you know, what's the estimated rate impact of doing all these things? Well, the reality with that number is there were a lot of, a lot of costs that were not in that range, things that we will not know until we actually get the proposals in. Some of those include rolling out what will be 270,000 new carts to homes in the service area. There's a lot of logistical costs of delivering those bins, getting them put in place. We've had some proposers tell us that the, sort of the one-time logistical costs for setting up a program of this type could be upwards of $1 million or more. There could be, there could be costs associated with the development of a new corp yard. The Shoreway improvements that I mentioned, the 2% to 2.5%, are not included in that estimate. The bottom line, I think really out of fairness, so there are no surprises, is if you look at other communities in the Bay Area that have gone through these types of significant changes from backyard, manual collection to automated collection, and significant changes in recycling, is they've seen rate increases anywhere from 15% to 30%. So that, you know, the message is, we don't know exactly where these numbers are going to be, it's going to be a moving target, but what we're trying to do is create the most competitive procurement possible, to get the most proposers engaged, and hopefully that will help constrain some of the, some of the increases in the rates. With that, I can certainly take any questions. Larry Dory from the Teamsters is here tonight, he can certainly answer any questions as we've worked closely with them, and as I said, Chad is here from Allied. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. I'll just remind the Council that it's our intent here tonight to either approve a resolution, approving the RFP that we have, or to modify it accordingly, but in any event, to approve something that could be moved forward. So with that in mind, the question's for Kevin. And I guess I'll have one I'll just start off with, Kevin. I noticed an interesting section here on various cities asking for various things, and this is on page 39 of the report. And I gather these will be priced in some fashion. Do you anticipate sort of a menu that the cities could use to add services at some sort of pricing factor, or are these now dedicated to the party who requests them? And my concern on this would be the question of pickup. If at all possible, I'd like to see San Carlos get picked up in a day, rather than having five days of pickup all over town. That's just a personal preference I have. But what do you think, is there going to be a menu coming out of these?
It's a good question. The way the documents are set up is there are cost forms for any changes or any differences that someone proposes or that a community asks for. We know that Belmont and Hillsborough or Atherton have some different needs, so there's specific places in the RFP document where the proposers know to fill out those forms for those changes. So the same thing would apply if, I think if you concur in the company that we select and you're, we're talking with company ABC, and you want to evaluate that, then it's a direct negotiation with that company to say, okay, here's how we want to do the routing, and what's the cost impact. What we're trying to do, we try to fare it out as many of those in advance, but, you know, it's trying to, there's a little bit of danger, and, you know, we're trying to hurt 12 cats, and they all have different tastes in food, and so what we have is an exceptionally, exceptionally complex document. So what I would encourage you to do is if you've got something like that, let's get through the process, let's get the firm that you want, and then you can say, okay, well, what if we add this in, what if we take this out, and then we can get the numbers finalized.
Okay, thank you.
Just a follow-up question on that. Actually, I had a very similar question. I looked all throughout this on, for the billing and the member agency billing, and I didn't see it anywhere in this document at all. I see, you know, billing for, you know, billing records and how they get different things built. But how, is it intended that, again, as a follow-up to the mayor's question, that member service agencies, once they have this Chinese menu of options, that then go back and they look at how much they can afford as the member agency? And specifically, I'm thinking about, you know, like on page 23, it references public streets, parks, parking lots, solid waste and recycling programs and things like that. You know, are they going to go through and say, okay, San Carlos, you've got 65 cans for recyclables, so therefore, the member agency, San Carlos pays this much, or how is that going to be handled?
Yeah, what you have in front of you, or what was provided in itself, is a couple hundred pages. What's missing is probably 300 to 400 pages of backup. And some of that detail will be, every member agency will provide a list of, here's all of our litter containers, and all of that detail that we currently know about will be put into the RFP, so that the proposer can ascertain what that's going to cost.
So then, as part of the proposal back, the fixed price would be X amount? It might be lower in Redwood City because it's more flat, it might be higher in some other communities, okay.
Yeah, and there is, in terms of the billing, I don't know exactly which document I'm referring to, but what we did in the RFP document itself is it spells out which cities they will do the billing for and which cities are currently doing it.
Right, but that's the billing to-
Customer.
Our customers.
Yeah.
And our citizen residents and businesses, not necessarily to the actual governmental agency. So that's, that was my question. Can I just ask a follow-on question while I'm on a roll here? I noticed throughout this, it talks about either the single, I forget what they call it, single-stream recycling, or the source-separated recycling. And I'm assuming that the source-separated recycling is what we do right now. So like in my backyard, I've got the blue bin for the paper, and I've got the green bin for, you know, the, everything else, the plastics and aluminum. Is that what source-separated recycling really is, or?
No, well, you're close. Actually, it's all, if you separate recyclables away from trash, in a sense, it's all source separated. I think in the places that that's in the document, there may be cases where a business has just cardboard or just glass, and that would be source-separated, as opposed to they have glass mixed in with their paper, mixed in with all their recyclables.
But the intention is that we all go to single-stream recycling, which is, everything goes in a-
Yeah, for residential. And there may be cases with businesses where they don't have multiple types of recyclables, they just have, say, cardboard or food waste, and that's source-separated.
Okay, thank you, just for that clarification.
Brad?
So, yeah, excuse me, a couple of questions. And for the record, herding cats isn't exactly a positive reference. I just want to note that.
I'm sorry for being honest at 9:45. I'll stop that.
Use the inside voice on that one, actually. The, so first of all, just to get a couple of things out there, the special fence thing, special events thing, Mr. Weiss, we should make sure that parking racks and all of our special events, you know, I know you've given some, you guys are saying you'll handle special events collection, and I imagine that'll be a dollar figure, too, you know, depending on the special events that we need. I guess I just want to make sure that, I know we'll have that, I don't feel like our special events are always as well taken care of afterwards as timely as we might like. So I just, I guess I want to be sure that A, staff is feeling like we're going to be properly handled in this RFP, and that also, you know that.
Okay.
The special event, garbage pickup, recycling pickup is important, is to get the extra containers out there and then off after the thing as quickly as possible. So I read some language to that effect in here, but as detailed as that can be, for, I would imagine all the cities would be great.
Okay.
The second thing was, I noticed, and this goes a little bit to Mayor David's question, is this, do some of the city requests go in perpetuity? Like the citywide cleanup events that some of the other cities have asked for, we just didn't necessarily discuss, but I think it's a great idea to have those kinds of days. So as long as we still have the option to opt in on something like that, or it's a discussion that may not have come up in our discussion, but we can take advantage of the good discussions taking place in other cities.
It really, as I said, about, once you make a decision to go with a particular contract, and we get through that process, and we know if everybody's in, there could be circumstances, and this is part of the situation of having a 12-member JPA, if a couple of members pull out, we have to ask the companies that say we've shortlisted, we have to ask them to redo their numbers. And so this is where it gets a little dicey a year from now, and once we sort of, we're through that, and, you know, there's a clear sightline to the finish, that's when you can say, okay, we want to do this thing with special events, or we want to make this change to billing, and so there's plenty of opportunity to do that.
And then, if we can just drill down for a second, I think it's mostly, just so I understand the compensation methodology and the change.
Yeah.
I think I understand the positive aspects of it, as far as rate stability, and you get one rate, and there's less consultant work, and less, you know, yearly accruals and all that sort of thing. I think I get some of the positive things. I don't mean to short-change those by speaking to them quickly. But I also want to make sure that we consider what some of the downsides are to those, or potential downsides, because there could be a couple mitigating measures we could work into this that may or may not help. But partly, it's so I understand it better, if we go to sort of the flat rate based on 10-year contract-
Sure.
And we never true that up, because I think that's essentially the proposals, it's never, we never get actuals, and we never true it up.
There are some, there are some, probably kind of like your discussion about the purchasing ordinance, there are some little clauses, and there is, after the first year, when you go through, basically, we're giving proposers estimates on the number of accounts, what we think is going on out there. They're going to come in, they're going to do their own auditing of routes, they're going to give us a proposal, and we select a company for San Carlos, well, they may actually get out there, and after the first year of business, they may see that the accounts are different, and so I believe after the first year, there is a true-up on accounts and a few other factors. We'll say, look, we're saying you gave us a number, we understand there could be some things, maybe you didn't have all the data, and it could be to their advantage, or it could be to our advantage. So I believe after the first year, there's sort of a check in there. There, there, the revenue, essentially what happens is if we say there's going to be X number of tons, and the tons are up or down, the revenue component is based on the actual tons, so there's a reconciliation process. So it is an oversimplification to say it is completely fixed. It's not truly fixed, but from a relative perspective today, compared to today, where it's, you know, it's a cost-plus, and the expenses roll through, and we spend $200,000 a year looking at the nickels and the dimes, and then we put a 9% profit margin on it. It's sort of a wholesale change from that.
Yeah, and I think I get some of the advantages. The other question I have, though, is if there was, if the company was making huge margin, you know, a margin that we felt like was in excess, we kind of won't be aware of that, though. Is that true?
They, we can, we could figure that out based on the information they report, but the, I guess that's where the risk balance is. What you try to do is generate a real competitive process up front, and try to get your best number, negotiate your best number, and then they have to live with it. There are plenty of examples, probably more examples of companies under this model taking it in the shorts, really, where they're not making the margin that they assumed. And so that's the, it could go either way, but what we've, what we've tried to balance with that is there are places in the document where we've said, there are services that are core, and there are things that we, you have to do, and we've been prescriptive about, you know, you have to maintain certain ratios of customer service reps, you need to maintain so many folks doing commercial recycling. We've tried to balance that so that there is an incentive for the contractor to say, you know, I said it was going to be 10 million, you know, it's really costing me 12, so I'm going to start, I'm going to start slashing all these things over here. So we've tried to be very, very specific about the scope, and, but also going into it, understanding that unless there's something catastrophic that no one anticipated, the number's going to be what it is based on the adjustments with the indices.
I guess I just want to be guaranteed that we'll have, you know, a good enough sense that we could audit the books well enough, that if we felt like we could get more service for the dollar, that we could do it, or heaven forbid, you know, the rate come down because, you know, they've overestimated the costs. And I'm not completely confident in that, and so I guess I just, you know, I would still like to see more detail perhaps, or if it's in here, you can direct me to it, I can do a little bit more reading. I want to make sure that we're really comfortable with that model. And then let me make one other suggestion.
Okay, sorry.
If it's a 10-year contract, would it make sense to do something in year six or seven, prior to issuing an RFP for the next contract's service period, where we actually did do actuals for that given year, so we kind of knew where it stood, or where we might expect? In other words, if we did actuals, and the company was getting shortages, they weren't making their money back, we could expect that there was going, the next contract was going to go up rather dramatically. That would be a good thing for us all, taxpayers to be prepared for.
Yeah, I'd be more than happy in any way that you think would be appropriate to give you that detail. I mean, the language in the agreement, the collection agreement is very specific about what they have to report, they have to give us audited financials. And so I think we can reconstruct, maybe not down to every line item, but we can reconstruct fairly well what we think their profit margin is. The other thing is in the seventh year, going into the seventh year, is where there's a window to negotiate an extension or not. And so all up until that seven-year period, we can get as deep into these financials as we want to, to try to ascertain, are we getting the service delivery to what we think their profit is.
So I'll leave to staff also to take a look at that, and feel like, if you feel like we can get enough information detail, that we could either A, forewarn everybody that, boy, this next contract's going to be a big surprise, because this company's not made any money for the last 10 years, and we're going to, you know, we're going to expect something down the road, or B, you know, we should get more services because there's, they're making plenty of money for what they're getting. Do you know what I mean? I like, I just want to be sure that, there are so many warnings in this about the accounting methodology, it worried me, to be honest with you.
Well, I think it's good to worry about it, what I'm trying to convey, though- What I'm trying to convey though is we're going from a situation where it's overly aggressive micromanagement, down to the level where there's no opportunity for cost savings. And frankly, what are we seeing? We're seeing rates are up, you know, this amount, they're down a little bit, I mean, this wildly fluctuating all over the place. And so I, you know, I could certainly provide any additional information to help allay your concerns.
And I'll look for staff's thoughts and feelings about this.
I guess one comment I would make through the chair is we do try to do that, and in fact, if you note in tonight's staff report, we did flag the fact that because we have not rebid the street sweeping service, that it is likely that service will be significantly higher in your next agreement than it is today, because that's been a long-term contract. And much as, you know, we will bid in some cases if we think prices are too high, we also, on the converse side, if we think we're getting a really good deal, we tend not to send those out for that reason.
So, Jim, may I just ask a follow-up question? I noticed, I was actually interested, and brought this up, was our, you know, 20-year-old fire truck that we finally replaced. I noticed in the document, there's an outline for, you know, a listing and a sources of financing for the capital that's going to be required at startup for this project. Is there anything, or any, and maybe I just didn't see it, that lists out sort of their capital fund that they should be, you know, building up over time, so that 10 years down the road, when they need to start replacing some of this stuff, that, you know, we've kind of baked that into sort of rates as they've gone on, or the cost of business?
That's a good question. The logic behind the 10 years and the seven-year, at the seven-year mark during the negotiations, that is about where you need to be making decisions about the trucks. So what you could do is if you wanted to keep that company, you could make that decision in year seven, and maybe you give them another seven years or something. But it's in that window where you start to see, the variable expenses start to, you know, get to a point where you need to think about buying a new truck.
Well, I just would be interested in, as part of the response to the RFP, if any of those, any sort of, I don't know, funds or for capital expenditures over the life of the agreement are actually included as part of their cost, because you may end up getting one agency, one company that responds back, and they haven't made any of those assumptions. And so their rate then is much lower at the beginning, but then you realize at year seven, oops, they're coming to us with, you know, needing another $10 million for equipment versus their competitor put that assumption into their agreement, and so their rate is higher, and perhaps we didn't choose them.
One of the things we've tried to do is be very prescriptive with the cost forms. So everybody's got to fill out the same cost forms, and so we will know exactly how much capital each proposer is putting out there. We will know how they're financing it, and we'll know what the replacement schedule is. So we should be able to tease that out by analyzing the cost forms.
Okay, thank you.
So it is broken out.
Then that's great, thank you.
Okay, Bob?
I've got a myriad of questions, but I'm not going to ask them. And I can talk to you, Mr. McCarthy, I'm sure we can set an appointment up, or get through some of the stuff that Vice Mayor Lewis had, and I'm sure it'll be brought up by Mr. Grokot, and was brought up by Ms. Doherty. I just had a couple of questions. One is just an item that I, it's a naive question perhaps, but not to me. What does wet/dry mean?
It's a, it's a, it's a collection system that, I believe there's a program back in Ontario, Canada, 20 or 25 years ago, where they experimented and said, well, you know, let's not spend money on all these processing technologies and make everybody separate everything. Let's tell people to put truly their wet garbage, the organic fraction, the diapers, the food waste in one bin, and put all the dry stuff in another bin, and let's just build these big facilities, and one does the wet stuff, and one does the dry stuff. And there's a company in the South Bay, Zanker Road, is the only company in California that's doing this sort of wet/dry processing. And so a couple of communities have asked for us to put this into the RFP, just so we can get pricing. The problem with it is there's only one company that does it. They do charge a significant premium for it, and it's sort of almost viewed like a gold standard of diversion, where you pay a premium for this wet/dry, but some of the communities wanted to know what it meant, what the cost looks like.
Great, thank you, I appreciate that. I figured that's what it was, but I was interested. As I see it tonight, we're looking at the big picture here, we're just doing the scope. As has been said, if we want to add or subtract things later on, we're going to be able to do that. So it's a bigger picture, and that's why I'm not going to ask all these little 20 questions that I had on this agreement. But one question I did have on the taxable, as you brought up, the taxable bonds, is that going to mean a vote of the populace? It's going to mean a vote of just 12 city councils? How's that going to, how's that going to work?
It's a vote of the 12-member agencies, and we need eight.
So in other words, it's not going to be, it's not going to go to the...
218, no.
No, so that's why I'm asking. So it's going to, so we just need eight out of 12?
Eight out of 12 in this form.
And, you know, getting back to the eight out of 12, and you mentioned herding cats or whatever, let's assume you get three bids, let's just say, for the south part of it or the north part. Let me rephrase that. You get three bids for the south part. Do all 12 vote on the south part?
You only vote, the other member agencies that are in your district would vote on the recommendation for, if we came back to you and said, we've got a company for the south district and a company for the north district, each individual, each individual member agency would vote on that contractor for the district that they're in. So we're not going to be voting, you're not going to recommend three or four companies for each.
I guess that's what I'm getting at, is in other words, you're going to come back and say, we recommend company A for the south district.
That's right.
So it's not going to be a matter of, we're going to vote on company A, B, or C. That's already going to be done when the time comes to us.
That's right. You can disagree with us.
And if we disagree with you, then it goes back to the, but, okay, then assume you recommend company A for the six, six folks in the south. How many of the six have to vote for that company?
No, there's not a prescribed number. It's your franchise agreement with that company. If people, if say two, two of the six don't, say there's six in the south district, and two don't vote for that company, we have to go back and have the company that the four of you voted for redo their numbers for the four of you. And the numbers will be worse. So there's sort of a collective, trying to pull the wagons together here, you know, but that's the way the JPA is structured.
So in effect, we're all, we're all going to have to vote for it. If any of us, if any of the six decide not to vote for the company you recommend, it's going to get more expensive.
It could be. I mean, certainly, we're hoping the evaluation selection process through the SBWA is robust enough, we're going to have the proposers make presentations, and all of you can attend those, there'll be summaries put out. So we're not going to try to say, you know, we're over here in a box, and then show up and say, pick this company. We certainly hope you're engaged, and we're going to send you information on where we are in the process. But it gets tricky if, the likely situation is you may have one member agency in a district that says, you know what, we just want to go on our own, or do something else.
Let me go back then again a step, and I apologize to the council, but I wanted to, if we go back a step to the board's process, you're going to recommend one to us.
We could recommend one company for all 12 of you, or one for the south.
Right, at your level, at your level, how are you, how many votes does it need to recommend to the south? Four out of six?
It's a vote of all 12 member agencies.
So in other words, Burlingame's going to vote on which company's going to be going to us.
At the board level, everybody votes.
Board level, it has to be eight out of 12. So it's sort of like, in a way, the way our county supervisors or there's districts, but the whole county votes for them.
Is that your understanding, Bob? I mean, it's, it's...
I understood it when we're talking about collection. And each, each city, each, you know, West Bay Sanitar votes on its own collection contract. It's our individual franchise.
I'm going back to the board now.
SBWA board.
SBWA board, anything the board votes on, it's two-thirds.
So Burlingame will be voting on a company to recommend to San Carlos?
And vice recommend.
And vice versa, and San Carlos will be voting on a company for Burlingame.
Yep.
I guess it comes down to who's making, who's making the recommendation to, for example, the city of San Carlos. Is it the board that is making the recommendation, or is it the...
SBWA boards are making the recommendation.
And it needs eight out of 12, so it's a, it's a whole thing, okay.
And there'd be separate recommendations for the collection than from the operation of the facility?
From the facility, that's correct.
Could be the same company all the way around. I don't know, to me, to me, I would, I would hope it's the same company for the, that runs the Shoreway facility as well as the collection. It just seems like if it isn't, it could be, I don't know, it just scares me a little bit that all of a sudden one company's going to, but maybe the rules will be so tight, and the contract will be so tight, it'll be great, but...
Well, it's interesting, they are different skill sets, and we're more likely to get, we're expecting to get some proposals on the facility operations from companies out of this area, from Southern California maybe, and out of Southern.
You have far more experience in this than we do, but...
Well, it's very complicated, and my mind doesn't want to go to these scenarios that you're talking about. It's going to be very complicated.
I've asked enough questions, I didn't mean to take the commission's time on this.
Thank you. Matt?
Well, my first question is, I just want to make sure that herding cats is a core service.
Yes, it is. We're getting good at it.
The first question I had is, I'm just going to go straight to the street sweeping thing. We're not dealing with that at all tonight, if I understand this.
That's right. We're going to, there's discussions with multiple member agencies to do a joint procurement effort. Where this would come back into the process is, once you've selected a company, you would negotiate the billing, as I understand it. The billing for those services would be negotiated into your franchise agreement at that time.
I think one of the interesting things through the chair about street sweeping is two or three of the agencies over the life of this franchise have used the provider. I think in our discussions with the other agencies, I think when they've seen the amount of money San Carlos has saved by doing it this way, we now have more agencies wanting to participate in this part of the bid, even though they don't currently provide street sweeping through the garbage franchise and provider. And the reason for that is that the equipment to do this service is so expensive, and if you're a small community like San Carlos, I mean, when we did it on our own in the mid-'80s when I first got here, we had one employee and one equipment, a piece of equipment. And if the employee was on sick leave, or the equipment was down or broken, there was no service for several days in some cases. And ever since we've, you know, outsourced, if you will, to the bigger company, contracted it out, the service level has been much higher. And I think for a lot of the agencies, they've done it in-house for so many years, it just never occurred to them you'd outsource something like this. So I think we will see more participation in this than we have today.
I won't ask any more questions about that. Mr. Mayor, I've got some questions about street sweeping that you and I can talk about offline. The second question I had has to do with what I'll call deconstruction material and recycling of that sort of thing. In other words, you know, when, for instance, a house gets torn down, you got wood and so forth. And I guess that falls under other collection service considerations, is that right?
What is it about the service that you want to look at?
Well, what I'm looking for is, more and more, cities are requiring, and we've got some information on our counter about...
Soft demolition is what you're...
Yeah, demolition and requiring contractors to recycle some of those materials, wood materials, asphalt shingles and so forth. And I didn't see anything in here that says, that has to be accommodated.
Mr. Landzone can back me up on this, confirm this, but those services are excluded from the scope of the franchise agreement. They're open competition.
We have our own construction demolition ordinance in the city. Most cities, most cities do now. Requiring the contractors to, when they demolish, they have to have it hauled off or bring it themselves to, for recycling. To, and, to the extent that that material can be accommodated at the transfer station, it could be brought there, or it's brought to other facilities for it to be processed there. But we require it, and most cities now require a percentage of what's demolished to be recycled. But it's not part of this contract, because it's not going to be picked up by the collection company.
Who collects it is not part of this franchise agreement. The franchise, franchise solid waste and recycling services scope does not include the collection of C and D materials, it doesn't include 1-800-GOT-JUNK-FOLKS, it doesn't include Whole House Building Supply in East Palo Alto that does soft demolition. Those folks are, we're not trying to get into their business, we're not trying to take their business away. They keep competing in the open market, separate from the franchise services. So we're not giving advantage to the franchise contractor.
To the chair, just as a follow-up question, so things like debris boxes, residents could still call 1-800 whoever they want and get a debris box brought over from the East Bay or South Bay, or anywhere, depending on what they want to do.
Yep. As long as there's not per trussibles or MSW in there, you know, things that would be defined as solid waste. If it's truly demolition for recycling, it's out of the scope of the franchise.
Something I saw, and maybe this isn't fair to bring up now, but I'll give it a try. In New York California Cities Magazine, they had an article about these bins that you put in downtown areas, and they actually compact the material as you put it in. Is that something that would be unreasonable to look at?
I think, I think in terms of the scope of services in this proposal, it's essentially, contractors are going to give us cost for emptying those containers, whatever they might be. If the city wants to invest in those type of containers, or if you want the service provider to do that, you could negotiate that into the scope.
Okay, all right. And that's it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
A couple of questions, Kevin, on sort of the devil and the details. We talk about holiday tree recycling, and you agree to do that 15 days after Christmas. The current requirement is you can't have more than four foot length, and if they do, they don't take it. There's no, there's no mention in the document that you have to cut the tree, or you have four-foot length limit. You might want to add that just to clarify it, because if it doesn't get in, we could be in the same situation.
What we tried to do is go the other way, because we got so many complaints about requiring people to cut the trees. I think we made the, increased the length, there's a definition in the collection agreement. We tweaked the definition to make it a little bit more permissive, because we had, we allied was flooded with complaints last Christmas about these holiday trees.
If you can, if you can forget the length, any length limits, and take what you get, so you're better.
Well, we tried to put a number in there, and frankly, you know, the issue, it's a worker's safety issue, but I think in the spirit of trying to recognize that, I think, I think Allied admittedly said that they kind of went from looking the other way to saying, hey, you know what, you got to cut it down, and there was, there needed to be some better communication. So we're trying to make that a little more lenient, so we don't get flooded with calls.
Well, the other one is twice-on-call collection services, which is great, that's what we have now. There is no mention here of any particular yardage limit, and does that mean there is none, or does that mean that we're going to deal with that later, or what?
I'd have to look, is in the, is there a collection agreement? We can look for it. There are some specifications around what you can put out.
All right, you put a lot of something in there, you'll get to...
Yeah, no, there are boundaries to it. I think there's an optional service for something that's a little more unlimited, and that gets to that citywide community event, so.
And then on the other page, page 18, there's optional services for single-family drawings, and you talk about a community, a drop-off community collection event. I'm not familiar with that. Is that something special, where the community goes to a place? How would that work if we were to use that option?
Yeah, it can be done in a couple of ways. Back not too many years ago, we didn't have on-call cleanups, and what you tended to have is a, you know, a garbage binge for a weekend or for a week, where people could put out literally unlimited amounts of stuff in the driveway on the street. And I don't know if it was ever done this way here. In some communities, roll-off bins were spotted in designated locations, and people could go to those bins. A couple of the cities want to still have that option to do it. The reason why most communities went away from it is it proved to be a lot more cost-effective to do the on-call. And also, there was just excessive trash generation. From a recycling perspective, people weren't separating materials. It was just sort of a, you know, get everything out of the garage. So we've kind of gone away from that, but that optional citywide cleanup, weekend, day, week, that's, that's something we're asking the proposers to, for a couple of the communities to give us the cost for those.
Okay, that's good. And the final comment I have is regarding the new station, which I think is done very well. I like the architecture and the layout. You folks gave a presentation at Hiller a few weeks ago, and I was very impressed with that. I made the point there, and I'll make it again, there's going to be some sort of a small or medium, where we're not sure how, quite how large community room in that space. And if you take a close look at that, and while we're still designing, get it large enough so that it could be used for, you know, for an oversized meeting, like we now take the Hiller as an example, they could come to a transfer station and use a community room at that location. It would really be a nice community asset. So, I know there are limits in terms of who's going to pay and everything else, but if of who's going to pay and everything else, but if we could have some additional consideration of that, that would be a great opportunity. And with that, I have nothing else. Anything else back on the table?
Councilmember Lewis wants some reading materials for your European flight, so I can get you all the detail you want in compensation.
Thank you, I may take you up on that. And my cats.
Well, I think then with the, with the comments we've given, we could move to an approval of the draft RFP.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the resolution. Member...
Fifty-eight.
Resolution approval of South Bay side waste management authority, collection operations, RFPs in agreement.
Second.
Any other question, comment? Your roll call, please.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Teagle Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Mayor Davids?
Yes.
All right, with that, we...
Seven G.
We complete our meeting.
Oh, okay.
No, no, we have 10G or 7G.
7G.
I'm sorry. Then my offer forgot. All right, 7G. This is the item on the consent calendar, accepting street repair, resurface project and authorization for notice of completion.
The question I...
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you. I had a question, and I'm not sure it falls into the scope of this project, because there was no description in here about what the project entailed, and I forgot it from the time we approved the project, if you know what I mean. But does this include the work that was done on Holly Street recently?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And on Holly, between Walnut and Lowell, there was some striping that was put in and then taken out.
Yeah, there was a mistake between Walnut and Elm. It was staffed, staffed and cashed, it was on the plans, should be striping, but of course, that's a mistake, because this parking is allowed.
Right.
When parking is allowed, you can't have a lane.
So what's been left now are marks where you can see the...
Right, figure out the...
I'm concerned about, to my councilmembers, that on Holly Street, between, what is it, between Walnut and Elm?
Between Walnut and Elm.
No, between Walnut and Lowell is where there were dash lines put in to create a lane, and then there's parking, and so the dash lines were taken out.
This was Walnut and Elm. They did it, but there's a portion of it, there is a driveway in the red zone, and have the lane there approaching Walnut, left that, the rest of it, they took it out, they're going to put some black paint on it, and it will disappear.
You see, you're not too high on the black paint idea.
I am not, and I'm getting a little, excuse me for a late hour in using this kind of language, but I'm getting a little peeved about putting in projects where we have to, we do striping. The same thing happened at Eaton and the Alameda when we did that project, we put in striping, it was wrong, we had to take it out. And we paid good money for these projects, and we ended up with, we end up with, you know, downtown Laurel Street, same thing, you know, 700 block, stuff put in a wrong place, and then we have to re-market and paint it and cover it. We paid good money for these projects, they should look nice, and they unfortunately don't, because we've got, you know, it reminds me of the old sepia drawings, you know, if you made a mistake, you had to go through, and you could always see where you made a mistake, because it came through in the print. But it just looks terrible. I hope before we complete this project, we can make it look nice.
So through the chair, on the same point, we had the same problem between Britton and San Carlos Avenue and Alameda, where that whole lane got put in, and then it got scraped. And it's, it was, you know, we decided where it was going to be resurfaced, I think in '08, so we, so there's two questions. One is, do we review all the striping plans before people go out and stripe? In other words, you know, detailed review, number one. And number two, if it's a contractor's fault, it's possible to work into the bid that just a simple scrape isn't good enough, that we need to do some patching or a more slowly seal over it so it's smoother, because it both doesn't look good, and when you drive on, it doesn't feel good.
First of all, Alameda, it was nobody's fault. We had to put the bike lanes, we had to shift the center line. The only way to shift the center line, remove the existing line, remove the existing line, that was happens. And this one was not a contractor's fault, it was our fault, that we didn't see it on the plans. And the contractor installed it, after it was installed, it was noticed that this should have not been there.
So is there a repair method that will not, right, right now, you can see where the stripes were and where the eradication took place? Is there a solution to...
There are, the contractor is telling us different methods that he's going to do, and we're asking to do a sample to see which one looks better.
That can cost us beyond what this approval is then?
This, because it was not his fault, yes. It's not, it's minor, just a couple of hundred dollars.
And then just quickly, can you, there, this was, you know, 3% above what the contract was for different things. Can you just explain to us what some of the extras were? In the, it says extra work authorized, and then even the actual contract cost was more than the contract amount.
On all the contracts, you can never see on the street contracts that the final contract is going to be same as the contract, because these areas that had to be patched, they were estimated and reviewed about nine months before contract was awarded, and it was, they were marked and measured about 45 days before the contractor got there. By the time contractor get there, these are at 42 different locations, over 2,000 square feet, so adding another less than 1% to it, there is a difference. It changes, because once the contractor gets there, the line was here, when he starts cutting or excavating, he has to do a little more. So that's why they are not exact. And the extra work was, staff found out there were some areas that needed additional more patching, it was added, there were some areas needed more striping, and it was added to the contract.
Okay. And just one comment, it has nothing to do with completion, but since I live in the area where some of this work was done, and these guys were out there at 6:00 in the morning, not a pretty picture when you're woken up by these guys, and they were staging, quite frankly, I guess, I don't know.
Right, they were just staging.
But their staging was noisy, and we have a noise ordinance, and in my opinion, they should have not been out there waking up this council member at 6:00 in the morning, but...
They didn't know you lived there.
What's that?
They didn't know you lived there.
I guess not, but it doesn't matter that I live there, as anybody. Yeah, that's, okay, thank you.
Well, part of these is going to, is sure is that this is going to be a pretty project